Good morning. Here we go. Any help I can get during this meeting will be great. Don't. Thanks. Don't hesitate to chime in. All right. So this is the Board of Supervisors for Humboldt County meeting for Tuesday, December 19th. When I walked in the door today, the security guy said, "Happy second Monday." I thought that was. I don't know what that was, but it. I get it. Anyway, so this is Tuesday, December 9th, 2025, and we are getting ready to salute the flag. So here we go. Director Ford, would you mind leading us in the salute?
Chair Wilson, can we do roll call?
Oh, see, see. Sit back down again. Sorry about that. We're going to do roll call. We're practicing. It's good. It's good everybody waking up this morning. Let's do it, yeah.
Okay. Supervisor Madron.
Yeah.
Supervisor Madron.
Present.
Supervisor Bone. Supervisor Arroyo. Here. Supervisor Bushnell.
Good morning.
Chair Wilson.
Presente. Here we go. Ready?
All are here.
All right. John, you're up, buddy.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Let's see. So are there any changes to the agenda?
Good morning, Chair Wilson. There are no changes to the agenda this morning.
Okay, I want to note that we do have some time sets for 12:00 PM. So if anyone wants to know what those are, they can go into the agenda and find them out. So we're going to move into the consent calendar. And I'm advising anyone online that if they're interested in anything on the consent calendar, they raise their hand as soon as possible and keep it that way so that we don't miss the opportunity to get to them. So with that, we're going to start into. Is there anything in the consent calendar anyone wants to talk about? I'm going to start with if Supervisor Arroyo has something she wants to talk about?
Sure. I'd like to read a proclamation.
All right, let's do it.
All right. This proclamation is for Human Rights Awareness Month, and please come forward if you're here to receive it. Whereas the United Nations Assembly adopted the Universal Declaration of Human Rights in December 1948, and this marked the first attempt in human history to set down the minimum rights every person should enjoy. And whereas in 2025, public awareness and a lack of civility has grown amongst groups of people and individuals and their ability to discuss topics of the day without anger or fear. And whereas speech, whether free or inhibited, is now strained by intolerant adversaries and from a multitude of pressures, including but not limited to statements by family members, public officials on social media and in schools. And whereas hate speech and tolerant language bias and discrimination have led to actions which are physically violent, emotionally intimidating, and in some cases cause physical harm. Such a transformation within our culture is now eroding and will continue to further erode the peace and tranquility our community expects and deserves. And whereas while Humboldt County represents a small, mostly rural population within the framework of our country, we must all act in ways big and small to change the climate within our control and strive to uphold and defend the right of free speech. And whereas in December 2025, individuals, local organizations, agencies, departments, elected officials and public servants choose a different path, a path that acknowledges peace, harmony and human rights for all. In doing so, we vow to engage hate at all levels possible during the year 2026, I believe. This is 2025. 2025 and beyond. Human rights and freedom from fear must exist for all people, or they exist for no one. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors hereby recognizes December 2025 as Human Rights Awareness Month and encourages all residents to educate themselves about the Universal Declaration of Human Rights, to value the privileges and freedoms we enjoy in our diverse society, and to promote engagement in causes that promote the rights and welfare of all members in our community, especially among our youth. During this time, we advocate for special civic engagement to occur, for personal reflection to take place, for continued efforts to educate the public, and for a community effort to use kindness instead of hate regardless of personal perceptions and political views.
On behalf of the Humboldt County Human Rights Commission, a group first established in 1965, I wish to thank the Board of Supervisors for their acknowledgement of our efforts and for their support during the years. In 2026, this commission will embark on a variety of new initiatives. We understand some old issues remain, but our understanding of other evolving issues is growing. With this in mind, I would like to forewarn the board that we will be seeking your support during this year to make sure that all of our communities are equal participants in the good life we all aspire to in Humboldt County. Young, old, immigrant, indigenous, straight, LGBTQ, black, brown, and in any way marginalized, all need to share in a better life. We must work together to collaborate. This is the mission of the Human Rights Commission. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm just going to take comments from the board. If anybody wants to add on to this. Supervisor Arroyo.
I just want to add on that I've just so greatly appreciated the activities of the Human Rights Commission this year, especially holding public workshops around speaking to one another and communicating with civility. I benefited from going to one of those, and I know the community members who were able to attend really appreciated those opportunities for learning and just so appreciate what you do and you bringing forward issues of great importance. And I think now is an incredibly important time for you to be a really active commission. So thank you for the warning, and I look forward to what's to come.
Supervisor Madron.
Thank you, Chair. Well, Jim and Bird and all of the members of the commission, thank you. You all do such important work in our community, and I think we're doing pretty good here at the board, getting you refilled with some seats hopefully too. So getting back up to some good numbers there. But just thank you for your decades, decades-long commitment. Really appreciate it.
All right, Supervisor Bushnell.
I also want to thank you and echo my colleague's sentiments. However, I do want to say that I know that the Human Rights Commission is one of the commissions that is very time-consuming for the folks that are on that board and that you guys put in a ton of hours that are volunteer hours. And so I really appreciate the work that you all do and the actions that you bring back to this board for comment.
Supervisor Bone.
Ditto.
That's about what I was going to say. So thank you guys for all the work. And I mean, this isn't the only resolution that we associate with your organization or your efforts and the community that you help guide. And so thank you so much. I really appreciate it. All right. Is there anything else? I think Supervisor Bushnell has something that she wants to talk about. Okay.
I just have a couple thank yous. I'm getting back to my agenda. I want to thank Johannes Becker. She was on the Fortuna Cemetery District for some time, and the commitment is also very large. And so she's going to move on to her other things and still serve the community. But there is going to be an opening on the Fortuna Cemetery Board. And if you're interested, you can contact Tracy D'Amico at The Clerk of the Boards and put an application in. I'd appreciate that. And then also to Connor Gaddick, who is going to be on the Human Rights Commission from District 2. I spoke with him a couple weeks ago, and I'm looking forward to the addition that he's going to bring to your commission.
Great. Supervisor Bone.
And I'd like to thank Phil Gruner at Fortuna for, he's a hunting partner, but 36 years on the Fishing Game Advisory Commission. And he has made, you know, great strides on that over the 36 years, providing hunting and fishing access and things for what the Fishing Game Advisory Commission was sanctioned to do. So I appreciate Phil's 36 years, and if it wasn't for health reasons, he'd still be doing it. And then can I ask, and I talked to Alicia about item number 12. I think there's somebody here from RCAA.
Yeah, hold on, we'll get to.
Are we go? That's consent. Are we moving that?
Yeah, we can talk about it, but just hold on one second. Just want to make sure we get through all these, you know, thank you letters and that sort of stuff. Then we'll get to the meaty stuff.
Thank you, Chair. Sorry. Is that me? Okay. Thank you. I just also wanted to thank Kelly McGitigan for her service on the Fishing Game Commission and wish her all the best in her new digs out of the county. So thank you, Kelly.
All right. With that, we have a host of other items on here on consent. And if there are questions from the board or anything they want to bring up, this is the time to do that. Supervisor Bone.
Yeah, I'd like. We're spending half a million dollars on homeless assistance program with RCAA. And I don't know if anybody's here, but I. It's not a concern, but what I have, we served 33 families for that. They expect the same amount of numbers for that. And the wages out of that $478,000 was $290,000. And I'm just, if we can't get more than 60%, 70% out to the actual, and I know there's work to be involved, and I know they're a tough group to do. But deep down inside, sometimes I think this is becoming more of a business than it is actually taking some folks off the streets. Because I spent a day yesterday walking around Eureka, and there's a lot of work to be done. I mean, there's more than half a million dollars worth of work to be done. And I'm just wondering if we're. I can't question what you're doing. I'm sure you're doing a great job and everything else, but I just, it just seemed like a. On. The average didn't seem right to spend $300,000 or $475,000 on wages. And I think that was the number I got, so.
Chair, just one point of order, if it's okay. While it's okay to ask this question and to have staff come up and answer, we should avoid getting in a back and forth dialogue over this since this item is still on consent.
I hear you.
All right. I just, actually, you don't have to answer. That's just a statement I want to say about, I just worry about, are we getting the most bang for our buck?
Well, my response to that is, since staff is here and we've had this inquiry, I'm happy to have you come on up and give us a little more information, and we'll try and avoid any sort of back and forth. Let's do that.
Hi. Robert Ward, Housing and Assistance Coordinator with Health and Human Services. We may have Lori Keel from RCAA on the Zoom, but I'm the lead on this contract. And, you know, this contract exclusively benefits clients selected by Adult Protective Services. As you may recall, Adult Protective Services is supposed to be a short-term program, but a lot of the people that get referred to Adult Protective Services need longer-term services and supports. That's what this program provides. Some of these folks need a lot of services. 50-50 is about the typical split that you see in homeless assistance programs between wages and, you know, rental assistance. But, you know, that sort of gets imposed on us by HUD and other funders, and it's a struggle. The services are just, they're very important.
And no back and forth. I appreciate the answer, giving an answer. I inquired about this yesterday, so he's not getting hit blind. That's why he's, I think, here today. So I appreciate it, Robert.
Mr. Ward, you say someone might be on Zoom that could provide additional information?
Through the chair. Is Lori Keel from RCAA on Zoom? She's the director of.
We're looking.
I do not see anyone of that name.
That's fine. We're good to go on that item. Is there any other comment from the board before we take it to public comment on things on consent? All right, we're going to move to Zoom. Is there any hands up in Zoom?
Yes, Chair. Caller 7718. I will unmute you, and you'll have three minutes.
Good morning. I again always stress the fact that if you're going to have something that's important enough to get ahold of people in advance, if you pull it from consent and deal with it appropriately rather than discussing any way, shape or form in something that's supposed to be, should have been pulled, that's my opinion on this one. I do want to reach out and have a shout out. I think it was Victor Garcia who was also appointed to your Human Rights. And I think Human Rights is a very, very important thing, and it will become more important as time goes here. You also have the other person which you mentioned, Connor. And I appreciate the people serving. I appreciate the fact that recently here Supervisor Madron, I call her known of a spirit of tips on to your Human Rights Commission. I know she was trying to get there early this morning. She was doing some caretaker work for somebody who needed some help. So maybe she made it, maybe not. But all those people who serve on this thing are greatly appreciated. And this is something we really need to make sure that we listen to these people when they bring you things. The other thing I wanted to mention here is we're spending $839,000 apparently. And I think that's item number 11 for an election. And you can imagine how much that is statewide for the special election. I am the president of the Humboldt County Tax Payers League, and we do object to this kind of money being spent in the opinion of some people just to put Mike McGuire and a few other people into congressional seats back in Washington, DC. I object to the profit. I don't care who is doing the gerrymandering or anything like that for this purpose. And I think that the tax payers are the ones who put the bill, $839,000. We are being reimbursed, but that still comes out of our pockets for these kinds of antics in the political forum. So I think that pretty well covers my main concerns or addressing the topics today. And again, hopefully in the future, we'll pull things from consent if they need to be even discussed or knocked forward rather than full breadth and having them discussed during consent. Consent definition is a very brief thing. It's supposed to be very precise. I have the definition somewhere. And if you look up the definition, you'll see that it's for items that are not to be discussed or mentioned, and that we seem to have a propensity to continually not adhere to the definition of consent items. Thank you for my opportunity to speak today.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the House, in the chambers, that needs, wants to speak on items that are on consent calendar?
Good morning. My name's Joanne McGary. I came in from Arcata. And the Human Rights Commission, I did want to come for that. I'm wearing my Humankind sweatshirt because this is a really, really important issue, concept, committee, existing thing we have in Humboldt County that needs to be constantly highlighted and people need to be reminded of. So I'm really appreciative of your acknowledging this committee, commission, and all that good that it does. I will be speaking later on non-agenda items, but I think a consent calendar item is about the truckers parade and loaning or allowing county vehicles to be participating. And this will hopefully be the biggest and best and last truckers parade using fossil-fueled vehicles because hopefully next week we'll be voting on our Regional Climate Action Plan. So just, you know, have a good time decorating and driving and all that. But the seriousness of the future and celebrating things is great, but we got to find new and better ways to do it. So go ahead and drive those county vehicles through the parade, but let's really reconsider how we do things in coming years to protect our survivability and the planet and with the climate realities. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Is there any other comments from the public? I'll entertain a motion and a second from the board.
I'll make a motion.
Second. Thank you. If there is no objection to a unanimous consent, is there objection to unanimous consent? Seeing none, the motion passes 5-0. Moving on to items pulled from consent, we did not have that happen. So now we're moving to public comment on non-agenda items. This is a time when you can comment on those things that are not on the agenda. Do we have anyone on Zoom?
Yes.
All right. Let's bring them into the meeting, please.
Caller 7718. I will unmute you, and you will have three minutes.
Hello. Kent Sewastie, hello again from Mexico. I'm quite distressed about the ten or the feelings I'm getting vibes from the board of supervisors. I was at that same level of distress many years ago when fire supervisor Ryan Sundberg, in public form there, addressed Mark Lovett and said, "Mark, people just don't like you." And I don't like that kind of thing. I don't like what's been going on regarding your relationship as a board and dealing with each other here. It irritates me, and I can only bully bullies. And so I see a lot of bullying going on at this time. And so I'm going to make a suggestion. And it's not all that pleasant for me to be doing these kind of things, but sometimes it's necessary. When someone takes on a mentor, and I'm addressing Supervisor Arroyo, you want to be careful who you're taking on as far as a mentor. Because this is, you're representing your people, and how you represent is important. But you want to avoid a mentor that has what I refer to as a Napoleon complex, a small person's complex, because they go through life making other people, attempting to make other people look smaller to make themselves look bigger. You don't want to deal, and this is a very derogatory term, with somebody who I refer to as a misogynistic prick. And when these kinds of things and this kind of thing enters the chamber, it is not good. I know you used to do roller derby there and do the battle there, but it's not a good perception for people politically, no matter what's their side they're on, to encounter this in the public forum. So I think I'm going to, I'm going to try to leave that topic at that. I noticed that Walmart's taking the old Kmart store thing down there, so we missed that one, or you missed that one, probably for the better. The tax base for Eureka will be fantastic, most likely. They keep getting property tax, so that's probably why that fell apart because of that. Maybe a little bit of karma was going on. There's all kinds of negativity coming from Humboldt County in many ways, and economically, you're not doing well. And I just, I just wish, I wish we could treat everybody the same way they'd like to be treated and keep the politics out of the chamber more than it is in the current. Thank you for my opportunity to speak on non-agenda items today. I'll be addressing a few other topics later.
Is there any other online?
Yes.
All right. Let's bring them in.
Caller 3053. I will unmute you, and you will have three minutes.
Good morning. Thomas Mulder here. I just want to confirm you can hear me there in the chambers?
Yes.
Thank you. I wish I could be there in person today. Got some big things coming up, but I'm on the farm processing, waiting for a distribution company to show up and hopefully continue transactions happening in the positive the way they've been for the last 30 days. Interesting thing I hear a couple of times when you guys read off resolutions. Humboldt County, small, mostly rural. As someone that lives in the rural parts of the county, I don't feel that support from the board, especially the current board right now with where we're going, where the sense of where we're going, and the lack of support for that rural area. It's very nice to be able to be out in the clean air and not have people living right on top of me. And I really appreciate that ability. But if you're going to say those kind of things, please have your actions support your writings and your words. It's a rough world out there. There's a lot of hurt in our community. You guys have the power to change that to some degree, ease and burden, the stress. I heard from a couple of people, you supervisors should have to live with some of the struggling communities, especially in the Southern Humboldt region, for a week. Just a week at a time to see what every family is going through and struggling and the hurt and the pain that they go through on a daily basis, trying to figure out what bill to pay. How do I make it through it? It's not the high on the hog. You overtaxed us. You've got everything and then some. So please take that into consideration when you make your decisions, when you make your comments. And yeah, it's really unfortunate. I'll be here listening. Look forward to commenting later. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
All right. Is there anyone else online?
That is all, Chair.
Great. Anyone else in the room that wants to speak to non-agenda items? And if you're, if there's more than a few of you, please sort of get in line. That'd be awesome.
Good morning. I'm here regarding the repainting of streets. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Phyllis Coy. I am here today to ask, if not beg, you to please repaint the Harrison Avenue center line. Since this is the dividing line for the city and county, I'm not sure whose responsibility the job is. It is hard to see in the daylight and almost impossible to see at night. With the rainy season soon to be upon us, we hope, it will be that much more difficult to see the center line. It seems that some drivers who cannot see a center line choose to take their half of the street out of the center, choose to take their half of the street out of the center, and that makes for some very interesting swerving to avoid head-on and/or side-swiping. No doubt there are many other public streets in your jurisdiction that could also use a healthy dose of repainting. Please consider this a very valuable gift for all drivers. Thank you for your time today, and I have copies for each of you. I never know which direction to go.
We're working on that. All right, next.
Good morning, Board. I just want to respectfully ask, and maybe these policies are already implemented, but after an experience I had with a Humboldt Transit Authority worker last night, I think it would be deeply important consideration to invest in harm reduction training, nonviolent communication, and conflict management training. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. We will pass that along to the HTA.
Hi, back again. My name's Joanne McGary. And as I traveled over the 101 corridor and reading a lot about a lot of movement on the earth these days, I brought my go-bag to just remind us that we, as we head into the new year and the holiday season even before, be prepared. And so I'm trying to individually prepare myself, but I'm just hopeful that our community, our county, are doing all we can to make sure we know how to respond and be prepared for when the inevitable comes, no matter how small or big it is and resulting tsunamis or not. So that's one of the things I wanted to share about making sure we are doing all we can. I know we maybe don't have the emergency responding lead person anymore, and hopefully we have a new person in that person's place. So the second thing I wanted to talk about, because it's six months away, but we need to start talking about it early, is the idea of celebrating with fireworks in our communities. And again, this climate action plan will, will probably include things and suggestions for reducing waste and the harm that things like fireworks cause to our environment and to a lot of living things, people and animals. and to a lot of living things, people and animals. And so I really want us to really consider some alternatives to celebrating that don't include fireworks, bombs bursting in air. So I'm just saying that once again as something that we as a county should really look into. Fireworks maybe are passe, and the future is something even more delightful and entertaining and better for the planet. And finally, I'm seeing all this information about properties like Kmart, and I mentioned earlier, the campground on the 101 corridor that got sold to somebody who apparently lives in Dubai. And I think it's really important that we really have visionary leadership in looking at what is existing in resources in our community and what they can be used for in terms of helping our vulnerable population and, you know, consolidating a hub for services for our vulnerable population. And it's really sad that, you know, capitalism wins again in this whole struggle for trying to keep a safe and sane and humane community. So let's think differently in 2026. Thank you.
Great. Is there anyone else that wants to speak on non-agenda items? Seeing none, I think we're going to move on to departmental reports. Is that correct? Am I got this? So we're going to move to the Planning and Building Department. Information report on the process of suspending and revoking cannabis permits when the permit is associated with delinquent Measure S excise taxes. And we have Director Ford to lead us in this discussion.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair Wilson, members of the Board of Supervisors, John Ford with the Planning and Building Department. Working on pulling up my slide as we speak. Yes, sorry about that. So thank you, this is a report to really provide the board with opportunity to understand what the department is about to engage in, and if you would like to change that direction, give you that opportunity. As the board will remember, there's been a lot of discussion about when and how to enforce, require payment of overdue Measure S taxes. And the decision that was made was that the deadline would be extended to December 31st, 2025. And then those that have not paid as of that date in terms of their overdue taxes would be suspended and then ultimately revoked. It's the department's intention, based upon that direction, to begin suspensions in January and revocations starting in February. Wanted to give you a little bit of an overview of what's at stake and what this means. There's currently 106 permitted farms within the county. This includes farms that are in active cultivation. It also includes farms that are suspended and farms that are fallowed. I couldn't separate out the fallowed farms or the suspended farms sufficiently to give me confidence in those numbers. So the 106 represents the cross-section of all that are currently approved. 1,006. So this is a table showing the permits and applications that are owing Measure S taxes. You can see that there are currently 815 applicants, permits, permit holders that owe Measure S taxes. Of those, 331 have entered into payment plans. There are 63 applications that are still in process. These have not been approved, they owe taxes because they received interim permits, and so they were taxed based upon those interim permits. Of those, 33 have entered into a payment plan. There are 518 approved permits, actively approved permits, that owe Measure S taxes. Of those, 240 have entered into payment plans. There are currently 234 revoked, suspended, or withdrawn or denied permits, and some of those owe because they owed Measure S taxes as a result of holding an interim permit. And 58 of those have entered into a payment plan. So these are the larger numbers, the number in the middle that's in as bright a red as I can make it, represents the number of permitted farms that are operating right now, and that should be compared to the 1,006 total permits that exist. So we're talking about a little over half of the existing permitted farms in Humboldt County.
Could I ask a clarifying question?
Clarifying question.
Is that okay, John, just about this slide?
Yep.
Could you help me understand the difference between the 815 at the top and the 518?
Yep.
Just the nuance there?
Yeah, thank you for that. So if you were to add the 518, the 234, and the 63, and I'm sorry that it's like that, that would be the 518. Or 815, sorry, the 815. And, and so the 815 represents the applications that are still in process, it represents the applications that are currently permitted and operating, and also represents denied, revoked, suspended, and withdrawn permits.
Thank you.
All right, another clarifying question, since we're doing that.
So the 815 applications owing, the 518 do not owe?
The 518 do owe. Yeah, that, these all owe.
All of these owe?
Yes.
Okay.
So that's why I wanted to make it as clear as possible that over half of the entire permitted community of cultivation sites still owe Measure S taxes.
So out of that 1,006 minus 815, 200 and something don't owe?
No. Out of the 1,006 minus 518, the 518 owe, so what is that, 482, 88 that owe?
Okay.
Or that don't owe, I'm sorry, that don't owe.
Okay.
So slightly less than half of the cultivators don't owe on culture access.
Correct.
Okay, great. Any other clarifying questions from board members? Moving on.
This, these just were put together, the average owed is $10,000, the median is about $4,200, the low is $45, and the high is $194,181. So with the current direction, what we would do is that we would send out 518 suspensions in early January. We would then bring forward revocation in large groups starting in February, there would be a staff report and 20-plus resolutions associated with each staff report. The 63 applications that have still not been acted upon would go to the zoning administrator to be denied. That's the current direction that we have in place. And I just wanted to say that I know the board has received emails, received emails, I've talked to people. I mean, every number up there represents a person, some of them have stories that it's hard for me not to be sympathetic to, I'll just say that. I know this is a hard decision. And that's why I wanted to bring it back and make sure this is really the direction the board wanted to go. I mean, I know that some people are waiting to sell their product right now, and we know, we've talked about it enough, that late fall is not a good time to sell because the price is at its lowest. If they can hold on to their product, sell late winter, early spring, that's typically the best price to be able to sell for. And so some people who are willing to pay their taxes would like the opportunity to pay them but need that amount of time. Another email I saw that was, I don't know if it's complete justification, but was making the point that he was an early person that came into compliance with all of his requirements, and so therefore wasn't eligible for a DCC grant, should have been eligible for a Trelles grant, but for whatever reason that didn't happen, and he feels like he's being discriminated against a little bit because other people that have gotten grants have been able to pay their taxes, and he's gotten no grants and hasn't been able to pay his taxes. So there's, I just bring these up because there's a lot of stories there, and I would just offer that to the board, and I'd be willing to answer any questions or receive any alternative direction that you have.
Great. If the board wants to ask questions now, we can do that, or we can open up to public comment. All right, I'll start with Supervisor Bone.
John, I know we've been kicking this can down the road, and I've got a lot of emails and everything else, but if we suspend their license, this is a market that everybody thought they were going to get rich off, both the growers in 2016. I remember being in Sacramento, talking to the Marijuana Advisory Assembly seven days after it passed, and we all thought we'd make, we'd balance budgets and everything else. And for three years, we brought in $58 million approximately. And they did, we were great partners and everything else. But we had to realize, we still have a better name than anybody else, but a lot has switched to indoors, and people are finding out in LA, they're growing, San Bernardino, they're growing at acreage everywhere and stuff. Humboldt still has a pretty good name for its craft, product, and everything else. But we kind of built our community before 2016, when it was real questionable, and we heard, you know, we're going to, we're going to tax the hell out of a agricultural product. And a lot paid, some of these same people that can't pay right now. I got a call today that somebody bought a farm, had 50, he did not realize it had $50,000 worth of Measure S taxes, and as we all know, it goes with the farm. His understanding, because he's paid half of it.
I could clarify that through the chair?
Okay.
The only way that the obligation for taxes would be transferred is if he also bought the permit.
That's exactly what, because it's going to cost him that much to go back through the permitting process or more. So these guys that are legal are, I can remember in 2013, 2012, we were saying that 60% of all cannabis consumed in the United States came out of Humboldt. And we were pretty fat for that, just on sales tax, no other taxes and everything else. And it was estimated that we had between 12,000 and 15,000 grows. We only got 135,000 people, so I'll give you the numbers of how many were involved in it. That has evolved down to about, you and I talked, 1,500 maybe, 1,200. And I'm going to tell you, these people that have just barely made it, but they've made all the improvements, they've up, they've done their houses, they've done the water, these are, these are the people we want to be in business. We're going to drive everybody back underground if we suspend these licenses. And I, I'm not saying that we have to forgive them, because this is in the past, this was what was required. In the future, we've dropped it finally. When we first did this in 2016, they were wanting eight, 10, and $12 for, you know, outdoor multi, you know, parcel light and, and indoor, and we ended up at one, two, and three, which was the cheapest rate in the state. Because we were getting all the benefits we needed out of it. Is there a way, and I know we've talked about this and everything else, that we can lean the properties with the past due, and I know you're shaking your head already, or some other way that there's a promissory note that they will pay? When, I mean, I don't know if this market improves, I don't know if we market it better, I don't know if, I've been told by many a people that it's, it's at 350 a pound, if you can get it, it can pay. But you're not buying a new load of soil every turn, you're not, you're getting more creative, and you're doing better, and a few more less trips for, out of the country for a couple of months and everything else, it becomes a job. But you're doing it at home, you're, you're farming, you're farming. Is there a way we can work with these people that have worked with us for, some of them going on 10 years now, and respect what they've done, and at the same time, create a situation where we get our tax dollars, both property and sales tax, which, which is a lot? And, and, and we keep our residents here, because if we, if we force them into bankruptcy or dissolving them completely, they are going to go underground, which we have no control over, or they're going to leave. And I don't think those two options are what we want. And I'm not saying we've made enough money, let's not, the money's owed, and I'm not saying, because right now, I'm looking at the guys that have paid, were they more fortunate? Were they wiser? Maybe a little bit of everything, but is there a way we can make this happen for, and you know, this is a predominantly, you know, east and southern Humboldt, and I mean, it becomes an issue, and I, and it's, it's a tough go right now, and I just, I'm just asking, I just, because I feel it in every letter I get, every person I talk to, every phone call I get, so.
Can, can we distill that question down to its essence?
Yeah, I, what I understand the question to be is that is there a way to basically give people a, a way to pay the taxes over time with surety involved in, in the agreement?
Great. Can you mull that for a second while we ask, have a few other questions? Because I think there, I think every supervisor here has that same question, so Supervisor Bush, no?
Thank you. I also, like Supervisor Bone, want to be able to work with folks. Property taxes are due tomorrow, you don't have an option for those, and those are, that's a heavy lift for folks. Also, when a permit is suspended, Director Ford, does it stop that applicant from reapplying?
Well, I know you understand this, but just to clarify, a suspension does not remove the permit.
So revoke, I'm sorry, revocation, can they then reapply?
Unless they are in a restricted watershed.
Right, so that's counterproductive, really, if we're going to, you know, if we could work with folks. Also, can you pull up your slide of the folks that have entered into a payment program, please? I think it was 331. I'm sorry, do you just know off the top of your head, is it 331 that have entered into a payment program?
That's the total payment plans, that includes both existing permits and revoked permits, and also suspended permits, I believe. It should be coming up now.
Do revoke permits pay? It's like a car payment from a car that's been repossessed.
Yeah, some people entered in, probably entered into agreements before they were revoked.
So 331, so, I mean, I would very much like to work with those folks, for sure. The other ones, they haven't even entered into a payment program, so they are, that's the envoy of licenses that have been coming to us for revocation, is that true? Because you've been bringing, you know?
Yes.
And so they're not actively, probably actively growing?
That is true.
Okay.
There are, there are those.
There are, there are those in, in there, there are probably those that are still cultivating that, there's a, there's a number here I can't explain, which is that we have 518 approved permits, 240 that are on a payment plan, that leaves 278 that should be suspended.
And that they're not?
I, I don't know, I don't, I don't have confidence in the data.
So my other, my other thought is, when we suspend or revoke county licensing, and if that goes to the state, that also suspends their metric, and that gives them no, if they have product in their metric currently, which most folks do, because it's the end of the season, then that doesn't give them an opportunity to sell that product, it suspends that product, and they have to destroy it, which is really a shame.
That is true.
Interested in what the rest of my board has to say.
Great. Nice concise analysis. Supervisor Madron.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, along the same lines as Supervisor Bushnell, I think that there are differences within these categories of permities. I thought that even if you had a suspended license, you could still sell your product, because we just dealt with one a few weeks ago where the license was suspended, but he was still not only growing, but also selling product. So I, I thought that if, if you're in suspension, you can't grow anymore, but I thought you could still sell your product if you grew it while you were not suspended.
So, the county permit?
Yeah.
Is for all cannabis-related activities.
Okay.
It's not just cultivation.
So you're, you're reinforcing the fact that if you are suspended, you can't sell the product?
Correct.
As you mentioned, you know, there are lots of categories, lots of stories, everybody has an individual story, and I believe most of the stories are, are true. There are people that didn't get paid by distributors, there's huge horror stories about all of that, and then DCC, and, and nobody's really going after that crime at all, and there's a lot of people in that category. There are some people who are actually owed reimbursements from the county for overtaxing. There was one story I got yesterday on that, and they have been confirmed with the county that they are owed this reimbursement, and they're waiting on it, right? And once they get that, they're going to be able to pay their Measure S. So I encourage that person to reach out to your department and make that clear in writing with whatever documentation they have. But for me, it seems really clear and easy to go ahead and suspend those licenses for those that never entered the payment plan, and probably have not communicated with you at all. That's a really easy category for me to suspend and start bringing those forward for revocations. Because, you know, the bar for entering a payment plan was $100, I believe. You had to put down $100 with no requirement on any other payments except be fully paid by December 31st, which was a can kicked down the road for two years until this deadline coming up. But to enter that payment plan, the threshold for that was really simple, $100. And if you didn't do that, then, yeah, I'd say suspend and bring forward those for revocation. At 20 a pop, which is what I think you had on the slide, that you would be bringing these forward in batches of 20 at a time, for the board to consider revocation after suspension, well, that's, you know, like 10, 15, 20 weeks of board meetings before you get all of those done. That provides a lot of opportunity for those that are in payment plans, are in the process of trying to get the money together to make their Measure S taxes whole. And so I would go after those first, that gives everybody else some time, and I would be fine with actually not suspending those that are in the payment plan and are making the effort. And maybe we need to have some parameters around that, like, it's no longer just a payment plan, it's, you have to make 10% of what you owe every month, or something. Some, some parameters around that, so that we're telling people, you can't just sit back and do nothing, you've got to, you've got to make the effort at some level. The point I'm making is that that would allow those folks that have made the payment, entered the payment plan, and are waiting on sales, to accomplish that if they're not suspended, and be able to then pay the taxes, which is good for them, it's good for the county. So that's a part of the leniency that I would be supportive of. And like I said, I think you've probably got about 200 or 300 here that have never made a payment plan and never intend to do anything. They've made no contact with the department, let's work on those, let's start knocking those things off. And then, in a few months, we can revisit this. And my guess is that by then, in a few months, we're going to see that number of people that still owe drop dramatically over time as they sell their product, and/or realize that, you know, they need to get current with a payment plan and not just the $100. Whatever this board chooses to set up as parameters to say, this is what the payment plan looks like now. Not just a $100 deposit, but some percentage, or some surety, as Supervisor Bone was talking about, whatever that looks like. So that's kind of where I'm at on it.
Supervisor Roy, you can go next, but if, if the board could write down those things that they think that they might want to entertain in a motion to modify, please start doing so, so that when we get back from public comment, we can have that discussion as effectively as possible. Supervisor Roy.
Well, since we're sort of all saying what we think a little bit, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask a question that is part proposal, part question. I want to hear what you think of it from a, an administration standpoint. So I really want to understand, and I think this will help us have more productive thoughts from the audience, too, to have an idea of, I've heard a couple different options from my peers here, and I'm feeling similarly, that we want to provide some opportunity for folks to get into good standing, but we want to up the requirement a bit from what it has been, because clearly it hasn't been sufficiently structured, I think is a nice way of putting that. So I, we are in receipt of a letter, I think you also received it, John, from the, from the Humboldt County Garage Association, that laid out some ideas, and I, I wanted to hear your thoughts on their ideas, and maybe that can help us get feedback. So one of them was around if folks have paid 25% or more, that was like an example, but I like that as an example, by December 31st. And I, and I kind of like these, not just one at a time, but together. So 25% or more by December 31st, get into some kind of monthly or maybe quarterly payment plan. I think that onus of that would probably fall on the tax collector, more so than planning a building, but they'd need to remit information your way. And then revoke starting January 1st. And the terms of that, I heard Supervisor Madron say something a little different, but, you know, either for those who have not made any attempt at all to, to date now, or have not hit that threshold of 25% by December 31st, and an updated payment plan. So those are ways that we might get people into a more frequent and reliable payment structure, and ensure that there's a good faith effort. And I appreciated the suggestions here, I think those were, those were good ones, so that it doesn't feel like anything goes forever. But we also have some flexibility that we're offering people. So I wondered what your thoughts were on the, I know it's a lot of work to triangulate and do that follow-up with people, so I wanted to hear what you think of that.
Yeah, thank you, I appreciate that question a lot. The administrative burden of Measure S is huge, so thank you for recognizing that. It, it is a struggle, and it takes a lot of work. I think that providing a mechanism for people who have been trying and demonstrating a legitimate attempt, and maybe the 25% or some percentage like that is appropriate. I, it's a little bit of extra work to figure that out. I mean, it's a bright line between those who have entered the agreement and those who haven't. But I'm sure we can work with a treasurer tax collector and figure out who have, have actually paid 25% of the original bill. I'm, I'm supportive of all those ideas. I, I really don't want to send out 518 suspension letters and start revocation proceedings, to the extent that we can encourage people to a place of being in compliance, that's what we want to accomplish.
And if I may, through the chair, so, it sounds like you would be sending out letters if we were to proceed with what we had initially stated we were going to do. So you'd be instead sending out a letter saying, here's the new requirements, if you don't meet them, you will be revoked, so then that, that's, and then if we go through revocation for some subset of those, then there's additional legwork there. So it sounds like either way, there's a lot of communication you need to do with permit holders, but perhaps this suggestion would add a little bit more?
Well, what this suggestion would do, frankly, and, and I trust that much of the industry is paying attention to what the board is discussing today. So the, the folks who have the means, if they haven't achieved the 25% yet, if the 25% number is what's chosen, will, will bring that into compliance before December 31st. Some people may choose not to. And, and then it, it's just you've given people the option of being able to do that. I, I know there's a fine line there between those who have been able to and those who But it is a matter of communication. We can slow the roll, too, and if you wanted to give more time for the 25%, we can send that letter out and say, here's what the board has directed, and say, you know, maybe February 28th is the deadline for the 25%? And then we begin the proceedings after that. I just pulled those numbers out of the air, there's nothing special about that.
Thank you, I, I think it's helpful. I, I just want to note that, that was what, those were some food for thought ideas in the letter, and not necessarily all of my own creation, but I think the, the specifics we can talk about, and I'd love to hear from the public about, about that. But the, but the general concept, it sounds like, would be something you feel your team can execute.
We can execute it, yes.
Before I get back to Supervisor Bushnell, just a few questions of my own. I think you answered one of them, which was, considering the market and farming conditions, you know, if, if the end of the year is not a reasonable date to have a deadline, then we should ask ourselves, what is that reasonable date? And the public should weigh in on that, I suppose. And then, in regards to this 25% concept, I mean, we could do 25% or $1,000, whichever is lower, or, you know, capping that at 1,000 is what I'm getting at, or put some cap, I just, I just an arbitrary number I just threw out there, so, so that it's, it's not too onerous. Supervisor Bushnell.
Thank you. Once again, there, I feel product isn't selling right now, property taxes are due tomorrow, Christmas is in 14 days. And I would think that folks that have entered into that pay, payment program, to kind of simplify it, if we just say, going forward, you're responsible for 25% of your Measure S taxes payable every year. We don't have Measure S taxes currently, so it's not going to compound, and within four years, then those Measure S taxes should be paid, if they are keeping concurrent with that 25%. Let them pick that month, because when they sell, everybody sells their product differently, and as long as they accomplish that 25% in a year, then they can go on to the next year. Just my thoughts.
Okay, so before we, before we go to public comment, and I'll let Supervisor Bone jump in, so I, we're going to hear from the public. I think the public has heard sort of the vibe of the board on where this might go, there's obviously some options on this. So my advice to public speakers is get specific, get narrow in on the things you want to see changed, or the advice you would want to be giving this board, and Supervisor Bone.
Yeah, and with public comment, it's, it's got to be, Ross Gordon's letter from the Growers Association was pretty comprehensive, and had, had a lot of good stuff in it. At the end of the day, the ones that have had no contact, and everybody said it, the people that have no contact have probably left the area and aren't going to contact you. And, I mean, I, I, I think we can send that letter out and say, hey, unless we hear from you, sayonara. The other thing I'd like to do is, there's an opportunity out there, for a lot of these farms are being bought, and since you don't go through a title company or anything else for, for the license, a lot of them are buying these farms and then finding out afterwards, and they're actually saying, can we transfer the permit yet? But then they're finding out later, there is Measure S taxes owed. Surprise! And it's not their debt, and I know we tried to keep it with the farm, and somewhere in here, and the other thing I've got to clarify before everybody, because I, I get this every time, this tax we're talking about is just a cannabis tax. It's not a, we don't tax quinoa, we don't charge wheat, we don't charge any other agricultural product like this. We jumped on cannabis, and, and rightfully so, there's a lot of wear and tear on the roads, there's a lot of wear and tear on, I mean, at, at the time when it was going, it was, everybody knew that. So we had to put in some regulations, but this tax is wholly 100% a different tax specific to cannabis. It's not something everybody else is paying, and why are we giving the, the cannabis growers a break? We're not. We're giving them a break on something that they've been paying all along, and they're the only ones paying it for cannabis. I mean, we don't do any other agricultural product like this. So what I'm, what I'm saying is, as much like I think some of my other supervisors agreed, if nobody's going to give an effort to work this out with you, then don't give any more effort than they've asked for. But these other ones, and I'm adamant about this, and I don't care, I, I love Supervisor Bushnell's idea, since we're not compounding, pay 25% a year, and we'll give you four years to, to get going, and we'll put this in, if it has to be May, I mean, you know, when you guys have, you know, taken all the frozen out and everything else. So you've got to move your, you've had a chance to move your product, and, and actually you got some flow. It is a viable part of our economy, and I always say, I wish we'd worked this hard for timber and, and a lot of other industries, because we're, we're chasing a lot of industries now, and spending millions, and not seeing any light at the end of the tunnel. That's nothing more than an oncoming train. So, they're out there, they've done their, you know, due diligence, they're environmentally correct, that's, the whole idea was behind this whole thing. Because, and this is an old story I've told 100 times, I had a guy trying to put 10,000 square feet in, he had so much money invested on his 40-acre parcel that he gave up, because he was just going to do it, he lives down south, he was just going to do it on his property and have somebody run it. He put 30 acres of grapes in and never had to tell anybody. And you start looking at the impacts of 30 acres of grazed, you know, of graded land for grapes, to 10,000 square foot of a hoop house, and I'm going, hmm. So, the ones that are out there have created an industry, have created a name, good, bad, or indifferent, no matter how you're looking at it, but I'm just saying, we should probably take the burden off you, because I want to, I want to figure out how much the cost of us trying to, you know, chase this. I mean, at the end of the day, are, are we chasing 6 million of actual reasonable money and spending three at the end of three years or four years? We should try, I don't want to make it easy as possible, but I want to make it as possible as possible to these people that are out there. So I, hopefully they'll see that, but I.
Thank you, Supervisor Bone. All right, we're going to move to public comment, give the public a chance to, are you done? Do they? You got some more? All right. Supervisor Madron.
Thank you, Chair. I'm not willing to go out four years, I think that's a long time, and it increases the administrative burden on the county, we're in a bad budget place. I think 25% per quarter would be reasonable. There's also this category of people who have gotten their annual license, and the only way they got that is by meeting the conditions from all the departments that weighed in on their permit, I believe. To get your annual license, you had to have met a bunch of conditions, right? With the DFW, with the Water Board, et cetera, is that correct?
That is correct.
Yeah, and so, you know, those folks made all these decisions in their business to invest to get that annual license, but then Trellis came along, so-called Equity Grant Program, which basically, if you had spent all the money meeting the conditions and getting your annual license, you weren't even qualified to get a Trellis grant. Whereas a whole lot of people hadn't made an effort to do those conditions and get their annual permit, and their annual permit, and they were eligible for Trelis and got money to pay their Measure S, and they paid it off. So there's this equity thing, a so-called equity program, right, where it hasn't been equitable. And that's because the state wanted their money. You know, that's why they were focused on getting people to an annual license so that they could get their money, right? And so there's that category. So, I mean, I would break this up into categories. There's those that haven't been responsive, never entered a payment plan, suspension letters, revocation 20 at a time, bring it forward and make that happen. That's the easy cut in all of this. And then you have people who got their annual license and are still struggling making Measure S. I want to give them more time to make that work, sell their product, et cetera. There are a bunch of people who are sitting on product that want to sell it. That's a category. And then there are others. But, you know, I think there are some categories here that we could have different conditions for the different categories, frankly. But again, if we're focused on going after those that have been unresponsive, never entered a payment plan, that's going to take us a half a year probably just to get around to all of that revocation business. And in that half a year, we're giving everybody time to get caught up, whether it's 25% or 50% within a half year, whatever that is, we agree as a board to set that up. But going out four years, I think, is extreme because it does put a burden on the county's administrative costs to continue to administer this rather than get it done one way or another, you know? So anyway, that's my thoughts.
Okay.
Chair, if I could just, I want to make sure we're thinking clearly about the process that would be engaged. Because if people are suspended, they don't have product to sell. So in a situation where the folks who have given no effort, and so the effort given to them, they're suspended and then revoked, they have no further opportunity to accumulate income to pay Measure S taxes. That's the way that would be. If the folks who have given effort and are not being suspended, then they can generate income from their crop. So it would be pushing out that date to a point, at some point in the future. I just would offer that it's easier to have bright lines that don't require a lot, so they're either in or they're out. I mean, that's a bright line. When you start putting a bunch of caveats in there, it gets much more complicated and takes a lot more administrative time. It's not that we're not capable of that, we are. I just want to point that out.
I understand that, and I appreciate that response. And what I'm trying to say is that there's the group that have not paid, have not entered a plan, have not been responsive, that's a bright line, that's easy, that's going to take a half a year to deal with those revocations right there. That's 200 to 300 permits that have not entered the payment plan and have made no effort.
Yeah.
That takes up the next half year, that's a bright line.
Yep.
For all the other groups, even though I spoke about the equity issue and all the rest of it, the other groups I would not suspend. I would allow them to sell product. The only question is, what are the bright lines we're going to give on making effort with a structured payment system that no longer just says, whatever? You know, we're saying 25% by X date. That kind of thing I'm fully supportive of. But having some structure, I think, is important. The only question is, how long to make that structure last? Is it a year? Is it a half a year? Is it four years? We've heard suggestions of all of those.
Thank you. So in the interest of time, we're going to have supervisor Bushnell ask a quick question, and then we're going to move to public comment.
Is the tax treasurer on? Kaylee?
Yes.
I would like to ask Amy, the easiest process for you and the less burdensome, if you could comment on that?
The annual payment is the easiest. Anything else where you're getting into monthly or quarterly is a tremendous burden and potentially not worth the staff time.
So just blanketly saying 25% a year until it's paid is the easiest for you?
Or some type of annual, the percentage doesn't matter to our office, but an annual due date is ideal for implementation.
Okay. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you very much. As the public can see, we are churning a bunch of ideas here, so this is the time for you to bring in yours. Do we have any hands up from?
I have three at this moment.
Well, let's start bringing them in. And if you're out there and you, this is what you want to talk about, put your hand up as soon as possible. If there are no more hands, we will be moving to public in the room. I will not be going back.
Thank you, Chair. Caller 7718, I will unmute you and you'll have three minutes.
Kansas City Taxpayer League, I'm not speaking as that. It obviously should be clear that the growers themselves asked for this tax, and they may regret that. I can understand giving some leeway because of the bucket being flooded now. The people personally, or up to me, and I had a vote, I'd say that something like the 1st of April or last of March, everybody should be paid up, otherwise they go directly into the suspension and revocation. Totally agree with the concept for those who have not entered into a payment plan or have not adhered to that plan, being non-responsive, those instantly go into the suspension and revocation process. I kind of would, you know, maybe you could give some leeway to John Florida will have ultimate faith in, you just tell him, well, go ahead and bring us 20 to 40 of these revocations to every meeting. Prioritize those for the ones you feel are the most egregious, the ones that aren't going to pay. And the other people, you know, would be down the list. And of course, anytime this is brought forward to you folks, for that, any of those people that time could come in and pay. So it's not anything, I cannot go, cannot support going any more than one year at the most on any payment plan. How do you get a surety on this? Very simple process. It's very inexpensive as management standing. If you're a property owner, you go ahead and you can file a note, and that would go on the deed, of course. You wouldn't even have to go through the expense of recording that, you could hold the note until they either satisfied this or didn't. If it was somebody who was leasing or renting property, then they would have to get permission from their landlord to go ahead and get the note. And I think that would be a responsible thing for the county to do, to have that kind of surety. So surety really is very simple to do, and then you, of course, have a lien on the property. And when it sells, you're going to get your money. You have a high interest rate on those things, so you'll get a return on your money, better than you get currently if you return on your money with your funds in the county. I don't see it being all that difficult a problem. I do support giving a little bit of leeway here. Last call, folks. I mean, it's been, what, two years now, ticking down the thing, and you've got to have people be serious about it. The people who have small amount of payments, it'd be definitely, anything under, come up with a limit, 2,000, be paid by March 31st. And they have larger ones, then you enter into whatever would be three more payment plans during the year. They miss any of those, they instantly go into revocation without any ability to come out of revocation process, suspension or revocation. So trying to play a little hardball, otherwise they'll keep pushing. That's my opinion. Thank you, Mr. Bushnell.
Thank you. Next caller.
Thank you. Caller 3533, I'm muting you and you'll have three minutes.
I just want to say that I like everyone's idea on the 25% annually. Lots of good ideas out there. I, you know, Christmas is coming up, like everyone said, state taxes are due, property taxes are due, lots of burdens for farmers. My farm, my family, we've paid over 50% already. Just sent out a $4,000 check, but that was all my money from sales, so I don't really have any money for Christmas. Nobody's going on vacation. I haven't been on vacation since 2016 or 15, my family. My mother was murdered in February. I haven't even seen my mother or my family because I can't leave. I have no money to leave. So, you know, lots of things going on here for us farmers. This is, we got crushed, crushed. So, I don't know, the 25% thing is good. I would say just wipe it all out, you know, just get rid of it all. But I know you guys aren't going to do that. $58 million is a lot of money. Okay? So just figure it out, you guys. Thanks for everything. Take care.
Thank you. Caller 3053, I will unmute you and you'll have three minutes.
Good morning again. Thomas Mulder here. I just want to confirm you can hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. I like to hear this tiered approach idea. I kind of brought up something about this a while back. I'm glad that, it sounds like some of the supervisors are apprehensive as far as equity. Hey, I got cat four roads all the way to my doorstep. I'm sitting here in my parking spot, it's ADA compliance, that I could, someone that's handicapped, to get out and travel less than 200 feet to use the restroom, unlike the building that governs every building in Humboldt County. So it's kind of irony, yeah, a year ago, I took some money as a business decision on a high-interest loan and finished that building because I could pencil it out over three years, I would save the money, recoup for my portable toilet. So that's a business decision. I made that commitment, but it was also on a high-interest loan. I have every single thing done on my compliance. I create, fixed all of the environmental stuff that was created before, my father was even born. So all buildings permitted, cat four roads, which is a stretch, but, you know, to say I'm frustrated, angry, oh, those are all words that are truthful. Do I feel discriminated against? Absolutely. Was I eligible for any of that Trelis stuff? No, because I did everything. It really is unfair. So, yeah, all my compliance stuff is done, but I'm behind a MIGER S. You suspend me in January, I lose my bank account, so I can't get payments into my account through legal sales. I can't have legal sales. It's just really frustrating, the passion, the heart of all the people that committed to what they committed to. It's just frustrating. I mean, the other thing to think about is you have a huge compliance thing checked with January 26th, everyone's got to be on solar off generators, I believe. Not everyone, but a lot of people that were passed. I could talk on this for hours. I wish I was sitting there staring every one of you in the face, just show you the struggles myself and many others have gone through. This is your time to show a little bit of compassion, a little bit of heart, and think every decision you make, those are families associated with every one of those decisions. So think about that. Think of what you're saying to the community, the next generation. If you want collateral, I have a piece of paper, someone owed me $316,000 in change, signed by a judge. I'll give that to you in a second, wipe away my MIGER S taxes. I'm owed over a half a million between that and distributors that have gone out of business. To say that we haven't struggled is false. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Caller 1703, I will unmute you and you will have three minutes.
Hello, this is Suzanne from Mark Advisors. I'm so sorry, I'm following Thomas. He shared the sentiment I have. I am not a farmer, but I've worked with him for 10 years in the role of a consultant, trying to help that state comply. And this county has asked far too much from these folks. You need to give them more time. I beg you to give them more time. A four-year plan at 25% is a good way to go. Comments like, we just got to get it done one way or another, is not what I like to hear from a board supervisor. I want you to know that you are dealing with people's livelihoods. For you folks, it's just a boat. For our farmers, it's a matter of putting food on their table. Please give them more time. I'm so sorry, I'm pretty shaken up. I think every one of the farmers you'll have from is going to tell you a similar story. I hear it every day. And it's rough out there, and it's the industry, and it's the regulations, and the agencies that are strangling these farmers to the point where they can't pay the taxes they owe. They would like to, most of them. Anyway, listen, please consider to be lenient. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Caller 4599, I will unmute you and you'll have three minutes.
This is Craig Nigetley, just another struggling cultivator here. I just want to say that I really encourage you all to do the four-year plan at 25%. That'd be extremely helpful, for me especially. I'll tell you, I currently owe $29,000, which is just impossible to come up with before the end of the month. 25% could potentially be doable, and I would do if I can make that happen. Since Measure S has been enacted, I've paid over $79,000 in Measure S taxes for this permit, so I've paid a lot of taxes. But I'm struggling with this $29,000, and having four years to pay it would be extremely helpful. If we don't get that extra time, I wouldn't be able to pay anything, it wouldn't make any sense because I'd be losing the permit in January. So I just really want to encourage you all to give that four-year 25% plan, and that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Caller 8653, I will unmute you and you'll have three minutes.
Anna Saja here. I'd like to say thank you for this time and consideration. We're currently a struggling cultivation business ourselves. We have currently paid over 50% of our back owed, and this time of year is absolutely really hard for cultivators to be able to sell their products. As multiple people have said in previous comments to mine, it is property tax payment time tomorrow, Christmas is right around the corner, and if we do become suspended, we can no longer sell our product that we are sitting on right now. You know, we really like the idea of the 25% annually. Like I said previously, we have already paid over 50% of our past due. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you. Caller 0746, I will unmute you and you'll have three minutes.
I'm Indy Riggs of Galactic Farms, and I would just like to thank the board for considering this matter this morning, especially the consideration of providing support to this sector. Many of us have felt for a long time that this partnership with the county has been, you know, one of being regulated and taxed for many to the point of going out of business as we all have heard and seen. So it's nice to see the support, this continued support coming from our partner, the county of Humboldt. And I would just like to iterate that with emerging markets and economic sectors, especially in rural areas such as ours, you cannot tax and regulate an economic sector into prosperity. But you can support that sector to the point that it does become prosperous, and then maybe there could be some money from that. So I would like that to be understood, that's just economics 101. So I would like to just, let's work together, all of us, to continue to build a sustainable and resilient sector, cannabis sector in our county and in our communities, that there is a future for that. There are people that are surviving, and if we can continue to support resiliency and sustainability can be instilled into this county, and there can be a future here. So that said... So that said, I am completely in support by the letter that Ross Gordon wrote and from our Growers Alliance, HCGA. So please, I would, please just provide people more time to collect this money. It's better than not getting anything and shutting these gates for good is just not the way to go. So I just want to say again, I appreciate your guys' support and the consideration, and please give these folks our farm as another chance. I think that in the end, we can really have something viable here, and we need your support, and we need you to be our partners in this. That's all I got. Thank you, guys. Have a great day.
Thank you. Caller 8416, I will unmute you and you'll have three minutes.
Hi, yeah, this is Sunshine Stairstata, Humboldt grown. Couple of things. I wanted, my dad bought a parcel across the street. It has a permit. It cannot be permitted under the new ordinance, and it has quite a bit in back taxes owed on it, on that permit. And there's only a couple of ways to really handle this. One is looking at your definition for prime ag land in the zoning, and that not allowing, like, for prime ag land, it shouldn't matter what size parcel you have to participate. And anyway, it's kind of, you're going against your own zoning definition, because if you look at it, you should be growing something and have a business. In fact, that is more important than even your residence according to that definition. So, the other issue is Measure S forgiveness. Okay, now that forgiveness, it must come from the farmers who already paid those taxes, and forgiveness from the county. The way how I like, understand how this is happening is, oh, let's just wash out the bad actors who didn't pay their Measure S taxes. Well, you can't judge people like that, and it's not fair to judge people like that. Because I can tell you right now, in the black market, I trusted people. In the commercial market, I don't trust people. Lie, cheat, and steal, that's how people get ahead. And however people pay their taxes, everyone struggles to pay that tax. And also, it, you know, I just want to say too, like, my brand is still relevant. I don't even have products. And to get demand without product, that's not easy to do. So regardless, I'm here and I'll stay here. And, but please do consider forgiveness of the Measure S back taxes, and let's keep farmers farming, and let's not be judging people. And in closing on this, I'm just going to quote a song, a quote from the song from Quicksilver called "What About Me." You want to listen to the song? This is like the Humboldt County anthem. And he says, "I'm a fugitive from injustice, but I'm going to be free, because your rules and regulations don't do a thing for me. All I can really ask you for today is..." Dang it, I don't have the number of permits. But listen up. Put that permit at the bottom of the stack, okay? When it comes up for hearing, give me that favor, and I'll see what I can do, and maybe things will change. It's permit 10424. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all on Zoom chair.
All right, so we have some folks in the room, so we're going to start public comment in the room. I'm going to ask that you guys kind of line up, not like wait for one person to sit down and one person to get up again, so we can kind of keep the flow, if that's all right. And then as soon as we're done with that, we're going to deliberate on and hopefully get a motion to see what we can do to modify the situation. So, please, you're on. You're first in line.
Hey, Nia Hustler, thank you for everything. You guys look like you kind of are understanding the situation right now. I just want to say that, like, you know, using the term "fair" in this whole thing kind of went out the window a long time ago. As of like, getting robbed from distributors, Mike, I had 47 employees on the books in your district. I had to let go two years ago. I worked seven days a week, from 7:00 in the morning to 7:00 at night, to keep that open. Most of those were college students, and I actually had quite a few homeless people that worked for me. It's all gone. Let's just try to save what we have left here. I think another issue that we're also dealing with too is the federal ban on hemp. Humboldt County has another reset right now, and we better take advantage of it. They say that that was 95% of the market is on regulated hemp. That was direct competition to us, because we know it's not hemp that they're making shirts out of. They're spraying it with everything, they're selling it at gas stations. The state has already made a ban on it, but now it's a federal ban. So, any state that wants to deal with hemp basically has to go down the regulations of cannabis and be regulated. There was no guardrails on that. And so I would say like a two-year payment program, we might see the best year we've seen in years by the end of this year. November 13th or 23rd, hemp becomes federally illegal. So the supplies that are in motion right now are going to filter through for the next probably six months. But then they have to wait till October to harvest again, most of them. And those harvests, they will not be able to process that and get it back on the market. So they're probably not even going to plant this year, most of them. So we do stand in a great position, Humboldt County does, to recapture this thing to some cap capacity. The people that haven't entered any kind of payment program, I agree, I would say send them one letter. If you don't respond, you're gone. So, thank you everybody for being understanding here though, for sure. It means a lot, living here my whole life. So, thank you, guys.
All right, next.
Good morning, supervisors. Ross Gordon on behalf of Humboldt County Growers Alliance. Appreciate the direction of the discussion here today and the interest in finding solutions that are going to work for folks and work for the county. I want to appreciate, I think, you know, Supervisor Bone mentioned that $58 million have been paid in Measure S taxes, and we're talking about an outstanding balance of about $8 million. And I think what that illustrates is that, you know, the amount of money that is remaining that is past due is not because people are unwilling to pay, right? It's because people are not able to pay because of the state of the market. And I think you've heard plenty about that, that I don't need to reiterate. And so, wanted to offer maybe two specific thoughts in relation to the conversation that's been happening over the past maybe half hour here. The first is, if we're talking about requiring some amount of annual payment as a percentage or amount of your past due taxes, first to push out that first payment to pass December 31st. I think it is true that farmers are generally paying attention to this, but I wouldn't say everyone necessarily is. And also, I don't think it's necessarily trivial to come up with that first 25% for everyone. So I think if people had another, at least couple of months to be able to locate that first payment before moving into a punitive place, that would be really helpful. And the other suggestion wanted to make is, I do think this idea of 25% over four years makes sense. Once we're at a point where it seems like it's administratively possible to require payment over time, I don't see why it should matter to the county whether that happens over one year or over four years. Doing it over a longer period of time is going to provide more people with an opportunity to pay, an opportunity to bring that revenue in. I think we'll bring more revenue into the county, and we'll put you in the position of having to create these punitive actions that I think nobody really wants to take for people who are showing good faith by virtue of paying annually. So I would encourage giving people a longer timeline to pay as long as they are meeting a certain minimum amount annually. And I think the four-year timeline sounds like it's one that, you know, a lot of people would be open to. So, appreciate the consideration today. Thank you.
All right, anyone else?
Hello, this is Kevin Dobosh. Basically, I just wanted to come up. I was going to bring to attention exactly what Bushnell proposed. Trying to predict a rapidly declining market over the last few years has been ridiculous. I don't know, trying to prepare every single year, putting this at top priority, I just have not been able to make it happen. In the past, I've already cleared about $130,000 of Measure S taxes. When I was able to make that happen, I cleared it. And I think the biggest point is pushing this past into February for the 25%. Because right now, it's just extremely not doable. The market's extremely competitive. Cost of production's right around like $250 for average farm, and that's like the average price of pound. So, even lower than that. I think the four-year plan is extremely doable for farms. It's something that we can plan for. Setting the bar too high, I don't see how that benefits anybody, the county. It seems like every single time this comes around, no one pays. And so I think 25% is extremely doable for majority of all the farms that are still owing. That's the best way I think you're going to get the money back. And I've just been trying to navigate basically the debts that I've created since the fall in about 2021. And this Measure S tax has been like a looming cloud over my head. I haven't known a single friend that has been blowing money on other stuff. Everybody's been trying to just focus on keeping this as a priority. No one's going on vacations, no one's doing like buying new trucks. Everybody's just focusing on this and just not being able to make it happen year after year. No one can prepare for the next fall. It seems like it's dropping about $100 a pound every single year since 2021. So, I just want to really push for the four-year goal, and I think by February, that should be completely doable. I don't see what benefit trying to do a monthly or a quarterly is going to do. It's just going to overcomplicate with staff time, and you guys have been dealing with this for nine years. And it's just been complete burden, burden, you know? A lot of work for you guys. So, I think best favor, best interest is to just make it simple, 25% every year, and just, I think that's going to be the best outcome. Thank you.
Hi supervisors, hi John. Crystal here from Solfa Farms, and I was, I really liked the suggestion of the 25%. It's still very looming and very hard, so I want to let you guys know that is not like, oh yay, we're going to get this. I wanted to bring a different perspective, that is that we have invested in the county, we've invested in you guys over and over and over. The salmon are back. We're putting water, we're storing water, we're putting it in, we're buffering the water table. We have fixed roads, we've invested and invested and invested. So the concept of forgiveness, what if we waived another carrot that says, if you can borrow money from your family, if you could do something, and you can pay 50% by June 1st, we end this administrative burden? And April is our weed holiday, it's our chance for the most sales, so I would suggest that we do 25% starting May 1st annually. We put the onus on the farmers, that it be a condition of our approval, that we can show the county that we have paid this 25%. And then my other question is more of an administrative question towards John, like, is there a possibility that our permit could have our cultivation activity suspended and not our permit suspended, so that we could incentivize people who are potentially selling their properties or doing other things to not have to go through this seven-year crisis of the county and all the work that it took to get this permit and to hold the value of these properties? And to say, hey, all you have to do to come into compliance is pay this outstanding Measure S, and then the county, you can have permission to cultivate again. And so for some of us, you know, maybe the suspension of cultivation activities while we try to figure it out, still would allow us the opportunity to move the product and to not have to get involved with the DCC. But to know, we can't keep moving forward and cultivating, or if we sold the parcel, the new property owner has this carrot, this potential, that they won't have to go through all this over again, and the administrative burden that there is. Because I feel like one thing that we're not looking at is way bigger than this Measure S debt, which is the plummeting property values that are going to happen to our treasurer and tax collector for the next five years while these properties are fallowed, while none of this work is done, and while all these farmers who have invested have lost everything they have. So, right now, we're logging our trees, we're selling our water tanks, we're doing whatever we can to survive. So, I just wanted to see if that was something, I'm surprised there's not a realtor here talking to you, being like, hey, is there a way you could just hold this? Because revocation and starting over, that is a nightmare. And I would just think maybe we could just suspend cultivation activities and give a little bit of a carrot. So, I don't know, 25% annually, four years, make that be our condition of approval, we show you that we've paid it. And then the other thing would be like, to get everybody to rush in here and make an investment one more time, maybe say, hey, if you can pay 50% of what's due by June 1st or May 1st, we'll forgive the rest.
All right, anyone else? If you're still here wanting to speak, please, this is your time to get up, do that. Thanks.
Good morning supervisors. I really appreciate all the empathy I heard coming out of the dais this morning. We've all heard so many stories of stress and struggle. I am here on behalf of the Humboldt County Growers Alliance and also as a neighbor to my friends and our farmers who are still struggling. I've heard a lot of people who haven't been able to call in, who've been able to watch, are texting me that this four-year plan is very doable for them. Across the weeks since we saw this agenda item come out, I have made so many phone calls and talked to so many farmers who just say, "Payment plan, payment, payment, plan." And we understand that the county doesn't have the software, we understand that monthly and quarterly may be an incredible burden. This yearly opportunity and extending that 25% to whether it's the 31st of this month, which we've heard is very challenging for people, or the end of February, or even the 1st of May, sounds like a great opportunity. We understand that the board is interested in coming to solution, resolution on this topic, and set a date of the 31st for this year, which is in line with the fiscal calendar year, but is not in line with the fiscal cultivation year for farmers. We cannot capitalize our crops sufficiently with the limited amount of profit available if you're able to make a profit to come up with those funds by the end of this year. I appreciate everyone's consideration for this topic. This isn't easy for anyone. I think it's extremely important to keep the property values high, keeping the opportunities for these permits, which can, as has been stated, we are all working here, especially at the Humboldt County Growers Alliance, to lighten the weight that everyone is carrying while we're treading water, waiting for the next opportunity, waiting for federal legalization, waiting for something to let up on hemp. There's so many things in the toe, and I also really appreciate you allowing people to speak for three minutes. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Seeing none, we're going to move back to the board. I'm going to let Director Ford for a minute, if he has anything to respond to specifically in terms of questions, and then we'll have deliberation, and I'm hoping that we'll get a motion as soon as possible so that we have something to modify and agree upon and move forward.
Thank you. The one thing that I would respond to was Crystal's comment, a question about whether or not a permit can be partially suspended. And I really haven't thought about that, willing to look at that, but it's my recollection of the way the ordinance is written, either suspend, or yeah, suspend the permit or not. I guess you could suspend a part of it and be willing to do that if that's what the board wanted to look at. I would just like to say, and maybe this isn't my place of staff to say, but I think it's important to consider and weigh, because I've been struggling with this. There's $8.9 million in Measure S taxes. That's the total amount. I think it's about 5.9 relative to, or 4.9 million related to the permitted sites. And, you know, maybe four years seems unreasonable, but the option is to not recover that. And that's the tension that I think the board has in front of it, that is really the struggle. I mean, maybe it's not fair to extend things beyond a certain point. But maybe, I think that some of the comments that were made about how much has been invested in the county by these cultivators is a fair point. And I'm starting to sound like an advocate for the cultivation community now. And I'm starting to sound like an advocate for the cultivation community now, and I don't want to do that. But I, I think it's important just to weigh those, those factors.
Okay, great. I'm going to start with Supervisor Bone. And just to, as, before you start, is, just as a reminder, it seems like what we're talking, we're going to be talking about here is payment plans and schedules. That's basically what we're going to get into. I did, I did actually relate to the, the construct of forgiveness. I think that's an interesting, I mean, not interesting, I mean, it's, it's meaningful. And I, I thought the framing of it not just being forgiveness in relation to this, to the county, but in, in terms of those folks that have already paid as well. So moving on to Supervisor Bone.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm not worried about kicking the can down, I'm always worried about kicking the can. But I mean, we, we're government, we take four years. I mean, we, we've got abatements that sometimes take as long as 30 years, 10 years, 12 years. We, we, we take a lot of time to do things, but, and I like the idea of a discount. I can't agree to a 50%, but I can imagine if somebody wanted to came in and pay 75% the administrative costs, if you wanted to come in and pay that 75% on May 31st, or whatever date we pick, if you came in to pay 75%, got it together, or you could borrow it to save that 25%, I could, I could actually wrap my head around that. I'm getting that look from John that I'm not too, okay, you bowed up, I wasn't sure. No, no, anyway, I, I could see that. I think, I think when we sit here and talk about our industry, we started talking, we got our, we got a letter in, in December of '21 from the Humboldt County Growers Association about Measure S. So I think it's very appropriate with the FIFA World Cup coming to the United States, that we've kicked the can four years down the road, and I think another four years with money coming in. And when I said $58 million, that was just in the first three years. I'm not sure what the total that Measure S has brought in. And another thing I would, because I remember it very well, I remember all the way back to 2016, the growers didn't ask for the tax. They agreed to the tax because they realized that they had to pay their percentage, and it was to get a little bit of public buy-in for all the years. You didn't pay taxes. You paid sales tax, you paid everything else, I understand that, property tax and everything else. But I'm just saying, and again, I want to reiterate. So I, I would, I need a little help from John, but I would make a motion that we put into a, a four-year payment plan, I'll throw the date, May 31st, you guys can all change I like the idea of send one more letter to the people that haven't. Send anything, and send them another one that says you have been revoked. I know, I know it has to go through us, but I'm just saying. And I don't think it needs to come to us 28 times. You can bring us all 500 or whatever it is. And if, if they haven't contacted you yet, they're not going to contact you. I don't think we need to kick that down to 28, for the most egregious. But, and if you want to pay by May 31st, if you want to pay 75% of your taxes on May 31st, the administrative cost for covering the next two years to make sure you pay them will be covered by that 25% discount. I don't, I don't have a problem with that. And, go ahead, John.
I just want to caution, while I, I absolutely think it's a creative idea to, to have a discount, we've not given discounts to people who have already paid. And so that may open up a, a can of...
It's, it's, it is going to open a can of worms. It is going to open a can of worms. I'm more worried about keeping the people that haven't paid in business, people that have paid, I appreciate it very much and everything else, you're in a position to pay. But it, it, it's the same thing when you go buy a car, I'll go back to the car thing, and then two weeks after you buy your car, they go to 0% financing for the next seven years, and you're paying 3.4% to your famous credit union, you're going, damn, I wished I would have waited. I mean, there's going to be a little bit, and we could, we can pull that apart. I understand not everybody's going to be happy, but the whole idea is to, is to support the whole industry. And, and I think the, the farmers are realizing that you guys sell a commodity, so when the dairy farmers are scratching, you know, and the beef farmers are scratching, now it's at a high price, they're making improvements and everything else. So my, back to my motion, I'll, I can pull the discount if you don't think it can work, or I'm sure these guys will pull it if they don't think it'll work. But I'm trying to make it as simplistic as possible so we can move forward.
Great. I'm going to, I'm going to move to, hold on one second, I'm going to move to Supervisor Bushnell, because I think most of what you said is going to be clearly stated. So let's, let's get this in. And is there a second?
I'm in a second, but I want some modifications.
Yeah, let's get it going.
So my modification would be that you remove the date, May 31st, and that you just make it in the calendar year, anywhere in the calendar year. Yep. Also, no discount, I don't think it's fair. And if you go buy a car and there's another option 30 days later for zero interest, you can refinance, you can't do that here. And I don't think that it's fair to people that have paid. So that would be my modification. And then the rest of that, to add to that would be, I don't, I don't know why we would send another letter. That's a lot of work for John and his staff to, to say, you haven't responded, you haven't paid a down payment, we've been talking about this for years. Why would we send them another letter? I, I just don't, what are your thoughts on that?
By standard practice, we would send them a letter saying that they're going to be scheduled for, for revocation.
Right, so you wouldn't need to send a letter that says you get one last chance?
Right, they'd, they'd get that letter.
That, that's, that one last letter is what I'm saying. I'm not trying to go into a lot of work. I'm just saying, throw a label on those 518 we got. And I agree to the modifications, that's fine.
Then I'll second. The other point of discussion, if I could just say, is, and I wanted to kind of address Supervisor Madron, is that annual permits, while they don't all have their compliance done, they, people were allowed time, some of them are still doing that. And then also, you know, I've had some folks call and say, okay, I paid my back due Measure S, but now I have my current Measure S from last year, what do I do now? And so that's just another thing that has been thrown out there. It doesn't affect today's discussion, but I do want clarification for Director Ford from this board. They were doing October, Measure S for last year was due in October. So, and the question's been coming up again because they paid their past due. But I do second that motion with those modifications.
Now, we're going to get into the discussion part, so I'm going to have Supervisor Royal jump in, and then I'll have Supervisor Madron.
I, I just want to clarify what I think I heard, because it was a little bit hard to track. So I, I think I heard you speak to revocation for those who haven't paid at all. Is that correct Supervisor Bone? Okay. So we would just proceed with that automatically. And then what I also, is that correct?
With what Director Ford says, there will be a follow-up letter saying you are getting revoked on this date. So we, and then this, and Supervisor Bushnell is right, this is probably after four or five other letters that they've already received, and they haven't made a response.
But there's no opportunity to cure that at this date. We would have said by last time we said that, if you didn't do it, then we're, we're moving ahead? Or is there still the window until the end of, are we talking about a window until the end of the year? Okay, I just want to be sure. I'm okay with that, but, all right. And then they, and then what I also understood was that we're talking about 25% per year for four years, not that they have four years to pay whatever desired per year. So of the total, and, and it's not, I also want to make sure I'm clear, whether it's 25% of what's left or their, of their total, John's nodding, so I, I do, okay. So 25% of whatever's left, 2026, 2027, 2028, 2029, done. Okay, is that clear? Okay. Thank you.
Supervisor Madron.
Well, the way this motion's been made is pretty messy and confusing and complicated. For instance, we did tell people December 31st, and just now there was a suggestion that, no, it's immediately as of today, I guess, rather than December 31st. There's several elements that I'm not really in agreement here. I absolutely want to provide some buffer here for folks, and I really liked the suggestion of the fact that, you know, 4/20 is the anniversary every year of all kinds of things, and having a 4/30 deadline, you know, is, is something I like a lot, because it gives another four months for sales to happen, et cetera. So it's, as the motion sits right now, I would not support it because it's confusing, I don't think it does, does what needs to happen. You know, I had prepared a motion to basically, I think we're all in agreement that anybody that hasn't entered a payment plan, hasn't communicated, would enter into suspension revocation. I don't think there's any disagreement there. So whatever the motion ends up, that seems to be in full agreement by this board. Then the question becomes, what about past due taxes? And I would be supportive of saying that if you're in a payment plan and you make 25% of your Measure S taxes that you had as past due as of a certain date, and I, I think you guys know what that date was, I can't pull it out of a hat here, sitting here, but there was a date where it was, became past due for the back taxes. And making 25% of that amount by April 30th of '26, and then by April 30th to '27, you have to have paid 50%. And then by April 30th to '28, you have to pay 100%. That's a two-and-a-half-year extension over all of this, rather than four years. So that's really the primary difference. And we reached that two-and-a-half-year point, we can reconsider and think about what we want to do. But I, I think the sooner we get this done, the better. And I just want to keep it really simple, because what I've heard is a motion is pretty confusing, to be honest.
All right, I'm just Supervisor Bushnell, and then I'm just going to clarify what's here, and I also have an, I also have an opinion on some point.
I just would like John to reiterate the motion, to hopefully clarify it, and, and also ask the motion maker, none of this, we would go to the December 31st date and then start, right? Is that, because that is the end date of what this board has already said. So then, starting January, you would start sending those notices out?
Correct. There is two different processes that will be going on here. As of December 31st, those who have not entered into a payment plan will be noticed that they're being scheduled for revocation. For those who have entered into a payment plan, they will have the opportunity to pay 25% in 2026, 2027, 2028, and 2029 to pay their entire tax payments that are due. And that would include at this point the 2025 tax payments. There is, while there was discussion about the discount, the discount is not included within that. So, and that's only for people who have entered into a payment plan.
For, yeah, hold on one second, let me jump in for just a second. So I, the one modification that I would ask from, from the motion makers is, I, I think the May 1st date is better than the entire year. I, I just, for a couple of reasons. One, we've heard that, that, that is a time, a time of year when people are most likely to be able to pay. And I don't want us to be pushing up against the end of the year again, and then having folks come in and be like, hey, it's the end of the year, and it's, you know, Christmas and all, all that stuff. We keep, it seems cyclical here, and I want to kind of break that if we can. So from my perspective, if it was okay with the motion maker and the seconder, if we could just get that to May 1st, as suggested by Director Ford to begin with.
Yeah. And I, the reason I broke it the way it was, and I'm sorry if it was confusing for Mr. Madron, the, the whole idea was the 25 tax to be wrapped into this, because I heard a lot about tomorrow's property tax. It's Christmas, this year has been terrible because the price right now, there's no, but there's people that have product that can sell. And in all honesty, it gives them a chance to find financing if, if they see a light at the end of the tunnel. And as you said, with the hemp ban and everything else, there, there is a little glimmer there, because that's a huge part of the market, a huge, I don't think people realize. So, I mean, they found 80 acres of hemp down in Bakersfield, and low and behold, it wasn't hemp. And the guy says, the guy must have given me the wrong seed. So, I love that lie, that's my best lie I've ever heard. But anyway, that's, that's what I was after, and trying to make the availability as much as possible. So it is, we're trying to, we're trying to work with, not be an advocate, but probably be an alliance with, with the, the community that is, the growing community.
Great. Supervisor Bushnell, I know you had something to say about my thought.
I do have something to say about the May date, and I, I hear what the board says, and if you, if, to make this pass, if we have to have a date, I would prefer that it be August. In May, you're buying clones. And those are costly, and those are your startup costs for, you know, to get your product going again. And so I, I think that open-ended, that people are on different schedule, and if it's open-ended and it said you have, you have to pay 25% of whatever you owe for that year, I think it's better for them, because different grow seasons, people grow differently and sell their products differently. But if this board is set on a date, I would prefer that it be in, later in the year, like an August date, so that they could buy their clones when they need in May. That's, March and May is when you start growing. I prefer the motion to stay as it is, but if it's a make or break, maybe we could push it out in a couple months.
Director Ford, have you, do you have any comments on, I mean, I, I am not a cannabis grower, so I don't know this, the answer to this question. But I do know what we keep running into now, which is December 31st has its own issues. And so...
December 31st has issues.
Right.
But I think that, you know, we sometimes try to get too precise in decide a date. And like Supervisor Bushnell mentioned, you know, if you're throwing a tax burden on top of people right at a time when they're trying to get their startup year started, that could be a conflict. And the other thing that I do know is, is the, the folks that seem to be doing okay hold their product for a price point. And that could happen at different times during the year. And so we could set a date that could be precise, but not in line with people's business points.
Okay, I hear what you're saying. Can we restate the motion? And unless there's more discussion, we can, we can move to a vote.
Sure. And I just wanted to clarify one thing, is that the requirement to continue on year and year, year by year in this agreement, is that the 25% does get paid.
Right.
If it doesn't get paid, then they're in that process of suspension revocation.
Great.
Correct. Yes.
Understood. Okay, so...
Yes.
Let's restate the motion so we can know.
The motion was made that for those who have not entered into a payment plan by, well, have not entered into a payment plan, as of December 31st, the Planning and Building Department will begin revocation proceedings for those permit holders. For permit holders that have entered into a payment plan, they will have the opportunity to pay 25% of their total tax bill, including the 2025 tax, starting in 2026, due by the end of the year. And that would be 25% in '26, 25% '27, 25% '28, 25% '29.
Is that it?
Yes.
Great. I'm perceiving that we're not going to have unanimous consent on this item, so we're going to move to a roll call in a minute. I just wanted to say thank you to everybody who's come and spoken, who's called in, and who's written in and called. We, we receive all of those messages and, and, and we hear all of those descriptions of, of challenges and, and suffering from folks. We get, we hear it. I, I understand that I'm trying... I, I understand that I'm trying to run a somewhat procedural process up here, which is, is not the most, you know, friendly method of moving things forward, but here we are. And I want to thank everybody for participating and doing a really good job moving this forward. And I think Supervisor Royal has one last thing before we move to a vote.
Thank you. I, I did just want to make sure that however this is framed in our communications, that it's very clear around, like I heard a couple of people say today, I've paid fifty percent. So that is great because that reduces the total, but this is still going to be twenty-five percent of whatever's remaining each year. So, so I just, I don't know if it's going to specify those amounts or just tell people, you know, you need to get into this agreement with the tax collector where you're committing to twenty-five percent and they'll figure it out, or what that, what that will be, but hopefully it's clear that if people have paid fifty percent, that doesn't mean they have two years where they're not paying.
Yes.
That's my understanding of the intention of the motion. Okay.
Yeah. If I could clarify what I think you're saying, is that we'll figure out what twenty-five percent of the total due is, that's the amount due each year for the next four years. And if there's a year where that's not paid, then there's the suspension revocation. I don't want to dwell on that too much, but I want that to be clear because I don't think I brought that up before.
Got it. Thanks for the clarification. I think we're ready to move to roll call vote. So one last comment from Supervisor Madron.
Yeah, I've heard two different things. I mean, there was the, so the base amount matters, right? What are you basing this on? And the base amount that I thought, I understood we were talking about was how much back taxes were owed when they were originally overdue. That's an amount of money. Now we've added what was due at the end, at some point in twenty-twenty-five, there was taxes from twenty-twenty-four, growing season payable in twenty-twenty-five, we're adding that amount in. That then creates a base amount versus what I heard was that twenty-five percent of the remaining, you know, so you pay something amount, and then the next year you have an remaining amount, pay twenty-five percent of that. Those are two different things, right? So the base amount matters as how we're defining that. And there's confusion around that at this board from what I've heard up here. So I want to make sure we're really clear on what that is, because I had always thought what we were talking about was a base amount based, well, I said it, I'm not going to say it twice.
All right.
Thank you, if I could, Chair.
Please clarify.
Can I clarify? First, the maker of the motion.
Sure.
I expected if they owed ten thousand dollars, they paid twenty-five hundred dollars a year for four years. I didn't think they paid twenty-five hundred dollars the first time and then twenty-five percent, eighteen seventy-five or whatever it adds up to the next year, and then twenty-five percent of the next year. I didn't expect to see that variation because then there's a bookkeeping factor and everything else. So I anticipated a four-year payoff of four equal payments.
And the secondor is in that same mindset.
Yeah, I think that's what.
A total of what is due.
That's what, you know, I didn't know I needed to explain that.
Four consecutive payments, four years in a row of the same amount.
Well, and the last comment I would like to make, Mr. Chair, is that I am going to vote no, as I said, simply because I think pushing it out four years is way too much. I'll probably get beat up by the industry again saying, Madron doesn't support the industry, on and on. I've had that happen before. You guys can say whatever the heck you want about me or whatever, but I've tried to be really lenient, I've tried to consider fairness on the point of all the people that have paid and everything else. There's a lot at stake here that we're trying to consider in this decision, and I want to be really clear. It's just that I think going out four years is way too much, and that's the only reason that I'm going to probably vote no on the motion as it stands. So I just want to be clear about that because I think giving two and a half, almost three years is more than enough time, one way or another. And the last point I'll make is that there's always going to be other burdens of payment, whether you pick December thirty-first and it's taxes are due and Christmas, or you pick April thirtieth and there's, you know, property taxes due, or you, and there's clones that need to be bought, or you pick, you know, there's always going to be elements of hard decisions about whether you pay your PG&E bill, or you pay this, or you pay that. That's always the case. I just don't think going out four years is the right thing to do. So that's the only reason why I'm going to vote no. Looks to me like this is going to pass probably four to one, and that's fine. I have no problem with that. So I just want to be clear as to why my vote is going to be the way that it is.
Okay, thanks. And you know, we have up on our screens, I think everyone's got, so please vote, and then we can move on to the next item.
Motion carries four-one.
All right. Thank you. We are now going to move into the next item. We could have a five, we're going to take a five-minute break. Yeah, let's do it.
Five short.
Okay.
Quicker.
Oh, yeah. Let's do workforce. You're up.
Okay. That's okay. I can intro this one. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Chair Wilson. Before you today is the Humboldt County Offshore Wind Community Engagement Mapping Workforce and Supply Chain Assessment and Strategic Recommendations. And we have with us Peggy Murphy, who will present the staff report to you along with a consultant we have online.
Thank you. And I just want to say that we're, we're running a little out of order, so hang on, folks. Pay attention, we're, we're moving through this.
Thank you, Chair Wilson and members of the board. We appreciate you moving us forward to be considerate of our consultants' time as well. As CIO Hayes stated, we're here today to present to your board the Humboldt County Offshore Wind Community Engagement and Mapping Document, a workforce assessment, a supply chain assessment, and then a strategic recommendations document. These documents reflect over two years of coordinated work with regional partners and with our consultant Exodus Group. Starting as early as twenty sixteen, conversations locally began about the potential of a federal offshore wind project happening off of our coast. In December of twenty twenty-one, two federal lease areas went up for auction and were awarded to RWE and Vineyard Wind. In May of twenty twenty-two, your board provided direction to CIO staff and Economic Development staff to engage community partners on workforce and supply chain opportunities and to pursue related funding to support this work. Then in November of twenty twenty-two, your board adopted a resolution committing the county to ensure community benefits and sustainable economic opportunities for offshore wind. Then in March of twenty twenty-three, in response to your board's guidance, the Humboldt County Workforce Development Board, which is housed within the Office of Economic Development, received a one-point-five-million-dollar additional assistance grant from the Employment Development Department for offshore wind education and early planning. Utilizing some of this funding, in April of twenty twenty-four, your board approved a contract with Exodus Group to produce the assessments that we're talking about today and the strategic recommendations. Today, four documents are completed. That includes the Humboldt Offshore Wind Community Engagement Mapping Document, the Redwood Coast Region Offshore Wind Workforce Assessment, the Redwood Coast Region Offshore Wind Supply Chain Assessment, and the Strategic Recommendations Document. These documents directly carry at your board's direction to engage partners on workforce and supply chain opportunities. They also support the board's commitment to ensuring offshore wind development in Humboldt brings sustainable, long-term economic opportunities to our communities, and they serve as preparatory documents, giving us the analysis, context, and strategy we need to position Humboldt County to capture as many benefits as possible from an emerging industry. The strategic recommendations provide a clear roadmap to guide our next steps, partnerships, and future planning. At this time, I would like to introduce Andy Logan of Exodus, who will present the findings and walk your board through the recommendations. And Andy should be on Zoom.
I am. Hello. Hopefully everyone can hear me. Is that right?
Yes, we can hear you.
Great. In that case, I believe I should be able to share a presentation, so hopefully everyone can see your presentation I'm sharing now as well. Is that correct?
Yes, we can see it. Thank you.
Great. Wonderful. Hello. Good morning, everyone. Thank you for the invitation and the opportunity to present here today. As Peggy said, I'm Andy Logan, I head up the Renewables Advisory Team at Exodus, and today I'm here to summarize the work that we've completed and was filed earlier this year to provide a detailed offshore wind workforce and supply chain assessment for the region. And so I guess, as I, as I expect everyone in the room is aware, Humboldt and the Redwoods is positioned to be a leading region in the U.S. to host floating offshore wind at commercial scale, but realizing and maximizing the potential is going to require an engaged workforce, effective planning, and a robust local supply chain. Over the past year-plus, our, our team has engaged industry partners and the wider community across Humboldt, the Redwood Coast, and the broader West Coast through interviews, surveys, and community learning sessions. These conversations helped us understand what local capabilities are present, who wants to be included in conversations around working offshore wind, and what work is needed to set up the region for success. The work has been mapping the, the region's current supply chain and workforce capabilities, highlighting existing gaps, and outlining clear and actionable roadmap to ensure that Humboldt County is not just passively hosting offshore wind in the future, but actively benefiting from it when it does. So our four reports from each stage have been completed and filed, and a couple hundred pages of research insights and recommendations made to support Humboldt County as it navigates offshore wind opportunities and looks to localize economic benefits. The work identifies areas in which the Redwood Region is well-positioned to lead on supply chain and workforce development for offshore wind, capitalizing on the strengths and interests of the, of the region. So the content of a few slides of this presentation is just all from those reports, which naturally provide much more sort of depth and expansive explanation than, than I'll go through just now. Firstly, just, just recapping some of the foundational work that was done to map out the organizational ecosystem and engage with the community for input into the study. There's a, there's a real breadth of experience and expertise in the region across a, a range of areas relevant to the development of a, of, of large energy infrastructure projects. This hectic diagram is a, is a network analysis showing the relationship between the constituent parts of the regional offshore wind ecosystem. We found over a hundred and thirty organizations that have some sort of interest or influence in how the region would be affected by the growth of the offshore wind industry. That ecosystem includes workforce training and educational institutions, government bodies, be they, be they local, state, indigenous, or federal. It includes ports and fisheries and environmental organizations, just a, a broad range of parties who have a role to play as the, as the region responds to the potential economic opportunity. And I'm, I'm not going to read all of this, and like I said, all the content of this is in the reports, but I guess for each element of this overall study, we summarize the, the strengths, the perceived weaknesses, the opportunities, and the potential threats associated with, with that, with that, with each phase. So, so thinking about the relationships within the ecosystem and how that relates to the theme of policy setting, leadership, and communication, we characterized strengths, including the existing network of community and academic organizations actively sharing offshore wind information and supporting early engagement. A likely weakness being the relative lack of a clear centralized source of truth on offshore wind progress and updates, which seem to have led to some confusion in the community, particularly around roles and responsibilities within local government. One opportunity lies in leveraging the redevelopment of the Port of Humboldt Bay as a platform for continued engagement and regional coordination. That's potentially a significant activity that the community is following closely and will be the epicenter for sort of economic growth in the region. And then at the same time, there's persistent threats such as misinformation, limited community capacity for sustained engagement, and uncertainty in the federal policy landscape, which could hinder progress if, if not addressed through transparent, consistent communication and leadership. I think in the name of time, I'll skip to this slide, it just describes some of the specific supply chain opportunities that we were, we were looking for within, within this study. But our, our supply chain assessment considered two aspects of supply chain development, the, the opportunity for new, what we call tier-one manufacturing business attraction in the region, and then also the, the ability for existing local companies to participate in the floating offshore wind supply chain. So while, while, while no companies in the Redwood Coast Region yet have direct experience in the offshore wind industry, that was, that was probably to be expected, but we did find some local supply chain capability that could support the delivery of an offshore wind project, including potentially during project development, secondary steel fabrication, onshore construction, or in ports and logistics services. You can see from the summary here, there were over thirty-five companies identified providing onshore construction services, over fifteen providing ports and logistics services, and over ten providing some, some form of relevant survey services. So naturally, there isn't, there isn't an existing sort of heavy fabrication industry in, in the region ready to support offshore wind, so there's relatively limited manufacturing experience, particularly when thinking about delivering components at the scale required for an offshore wind project. There also isn't a, a great deal of experience in the region supporting offshore infrastructure projects. So these are things that need to be taken into consideration when thinking about what is reasonable to expect from our local businesses when developers are looking for local supply capability. If we want to see a, a greater share of economic benefits land locally, we'll need to unlock some investment to enable that to happen. Similarly to before, and apologies to small texts on this slide, we summarized the supply chain assessment in terms of a SWOT analysis. Primary strength is the region's early mover advantage on the West Coast, supported by the planned port upgrades and existing local capabilities aligned with operations and maintenance and project development activities. A key, a key weakness would be the limited scale and capacity of local companies, many of which struggle to secure a larger contract without some targeted support. Among the, the opportunities, sort of global supply chain pressures and I guess California's push for local content on offshore wind projects both present a strong case for investing in localized capabilities, so there could be some impetus and support to businesses looking to make inward investment in the future. And then the significant threats include uncertainty around project timelines and federal infrastructure policies, as well as the sort of strong competition that will come from experienced suppliers in more established offshore wind markets. And then our sort of final, final theme area is just, in addition to the supply chain assessment, we also took a more targeted look at the regional workforce. The size of the impact and the workforce development opportunities really going to depend on what the work is that can be localized. The, the Humboldt Bay Terminal Project is really considering all kinds of options for how it might be developed. So to address this, the, the assessment sort of analyzed three different development scenarios of varying degrees of workforce demand, one, one describing the workforce requirement from a single large-scale project, a second scenario describing the workforce requirement from the development of two simultaneous large-scale projects, and then a, a third scenario sort of expanding on that second scenario to additionally include workforce impact associated with both large-scale cable manufacturing and foundation assembly occurring in the region as well. And that sort of highest scenario resulted in a peak annual demand of around twelve-hundred workers. All of that is pretty consistent with what's been observed or estimated elsewhere in the world for offshore wind development opportunities, but, but, but again, the, the scale and the shape of the impact is really going to depend on what the port is ultimately developed to do. We, we, we collated employment data for each major industry group in the Redwood Coast using sort of U.S. Census employment data and compared that with the, with the roles typically seen in the development, manufacturing, installation, and operations of an offshore wind project. Around ten percent of all employed individuals in the Redwood Coast are performing jobs that are required by the offshore wind industry. That indicates that a generally lower transferability of skill sets in the region to transition to offshore wind without some form of support to do so. It's clearly the industries with the, with the highest employment in the region have relatively low transferability to the offshore wind industry, so further reinforcing that the region's unlikely, unlikely to have the capacity to support the development of an offshore wind industry without some efforts to attract workers or increase training pathways and, and career transition services. So the, so the region will likely require some targeted investment in training and education, including partnerships with labor, with tribes, with local colleges to build a workforce pipeline that, you know, starts soon and continues through the decades ahead. And then, yeah, given that most of the activity in the region is likely to be based at or around the port, then we'll need to be mindful to shape our support around a workforce that can access those opportunities. Our workforce SWOT analysis shows a core strength is the, is the presence of local educational institutions like Cal Poly Humboldt and the College of the Redwoods, which provide a, a foundation for workforce training and upskilling. A, a key weakness, however, would be the sort of low number of workers with skills aligned to offshore wind and a limited number of union training programs locally. Among the opportunities, there is potential to expand training pathways tailored to offshore wind, particularly in construction, maritime trades, and, and STEM fields. And then, I guess one significant threat is, is the possibility that a large transient workforce or, or competition from other regions can sort of limit local employment gains if, if, if proactive workforce strategies aren't implemented. So then, so this work informs twenty-two recommendations to enable the Northern California ecosystem to, to target key opportunities for growth, both in Humboldt County and across the, the Redwood Coast Region. The actions are categorized across four themes and the suggested timeframe in which to occur according to, I guess, our present-day best estimations of future external industry developments. I guess while, while, while a perfectly clear picture of the future remains elusive to us, that also gives us the gift of time to do things well, and in a way, the best fits the needs of the region. So the early-stage recommendations being designed to set to target key opportunities for growth, both in Humboldt County and across the Redwood Coast Region. The actions are categorized across four themes and the suggested timeframe in which to occur according to, I guess, our present-day best estimations of future external industry developments. I guess while a perfectly clear picture of the future remains elusive to us, that also gives us the gift of time to do things well, and in a way, the best fits the needs of the region. So the early-stage recommendations being designed to set the medium and longer term up for success alongside addressing some of the more immediate gaps and challenges. I won't chew up any time by detailing each of these, but you can see here and in the report that there are some strategic actions to be taken around appointing dedicated offshore wind coordinator to ensure continued leadership and coordination, as well as creating an offshore wind task force to meet and report on the status of offshore wind efforts by other convening bodies within the region. There is definitely benefit to be found in performing some nearer-term actions, creating a regional business directory, investing in workforce development earlier rather than leaving it to the far, far future with expanded educational programs, local hiring agreements, and early engagement with unions and other trade workers sitting high up in the priority list. And there's also a lot of benefit in planning for the future now, putting energy and effort into securing, looking to secure longer-term assets like an operations and maintenance base perhaps, or potentially attracting manufacturing partners to the region that would embed economic benefits from offshore wind into Humboldt's economy in the decades to come. It's clearly adequate funding is going to be critical to carrying out the majority of the proposed actions, so there's work to be done to secure that funding from the relevant sources. Yeah, you'll see in the report, we've described each of these further, including describing both the first steps and the future steps for each recommendation alongside who's best placed to pick up and lead on each of these recommendations as well. And I guess that's it for me this morning. I'll stop presenting now, but of course, happy to field any comments or questions now if useful. There'll be a kind of development team at the county can also give you my contact details if thoughts come up in the future.
Great, thank you. So I'm going to bring this back to the board for any quick comments, and we're going to also, is there anyone, we have one member of the audience that's here for public comment? Is there one online, public comment? How many? Just one? All right, maybe we'll do that. We're going to move to Zoom for comment, and then we're going to take comment in the room, and then we'll move on from there. Now there's two. All right, let's hear it. And, oh, you know what I'm going to do? We are really pressed for time, so I am going to limit comments to two minutes for this. Two minutes. It's fine, we still have other stuff coming. For the rest of the day, we're going to limit time for comments to two minutes so that we can keep this flowing because we're pressed for time today.
Okay, thank you Chair. Caller 7718, I will unmute you and you'll have two minutes.
Well, thank you for my two minutes. It's kind of interesting whether we're doing a workforce development either for offshore wind or offshore oil production, either, both of which are energy. For as far as workforce, what, where people, I guess, they live paycheck to paycheck. So if we start training people now for something that might happen in 10 years, everything I've seen in the people I deal with, we're talking big-time contractors coming in, that's not going to, we don't have the local contractor to do these big jobs. The workforce usually moves around, I mean, construction workers and even specialists move around and follow these things. So I think it's kind of a topey at windmills process, interest being to be talked about. But I can see so many variations in this that we really can't afford to train a workforce, and we have no certainty that anybody locally has jobs. Maybe they can get jobs somewhere else in the country regarding these topics, but I think we're pretty well not going to end up developing a workforce that would satisfy a gigantic project in any way, time, shape, or form. Thank you for my opportunity to speak on this. Thank you for my two minutes.
Thank you. Caller 3053, I will unmute you and you'll have two minutes.
Hello, Thomas Mulder here again. Following who I'm processing and going about my day. As far as workforce development.
You got muted somehow? Can you restart, please?
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Can you hear me now? Okay, thank you. Thomas Mulder again. Workforce development. It's interesting. I would say it's very important to, if you're going to try to develop a workforce, show that you have a history of supporting industry. You kind of did that the last meeting or the last agenda item. But last time I remember when, I don't know, I think it was maybe Supervisor Wilson, who was the swing vote, that someone invested lots of money in our community, and then they were kind of shied away. So if you're going to invest in workforce development, make sure that you're investing for that development for projects that may happen in the county. Good food for thought. I don't know that the county has signaled that they're very pro-business. Maybe that's a biased opinion I've heard from others. I don't know, I've heard both sides. But I have heard from people saying that county is not very pro-business. And when you look at our track record for wind development, I don't know that we have a very high track record. So keep that in mind if we're going to spend money on developing workforce, that there may be jobs there and those projects and jobs are supported. Otherwise, I think you might just be wasting money, I don't know. I am thankful I don't have to travel out of state to go chase construction the next year. So thank you for that decision earlier. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
That is all on Zoom.
All right, in the room.
Good morning. My name is Katerina Oskarsen. I serve as the Director with the Redwood Region Climate and Community Resilience Hub, also known as Core Hub. We work with a network of partners to ensure that if offshore wind development happens in our region, it includes strong and forcible protections and meaningful benefits across all aspects of the sector. And today, I really encourage the board to approve the Exodus Report and adopt its recommendations. I also want to acknowledge and thank county staff for their work in finalizing this report. Although the federal government has paused its support for offshore wind, California remains committed to including wind energy in its portfolio to achieve the 2045 zero emission goal. This commitment was reaffirmed by voters in November with the passage of Proposition Four Climate Bond, which allocates hundreds of millions of dollars for offshore wind development. Also, globally, offshore wind continues to grow rapidly. And so we believe that there is a strong possibility that under a different administration, offshore wind may become a federal priority again. This slowdown offers some breathing room to do careful planning and research, to grow community awareness and participation, to consult and collaborate with tribal nations, and to strengthen healthy partnerships. These priorities are reflected in the report before you today. When offshore wind was a federal priority, our community was scrambling to keep up. And so by supporting and operationalizing the Exodus recommendations, the county will be strategically using this time to put necessary systems in place that ensure the local community is shaping what happens here. Thank you for your thoughtful consideration and support for the recommendations.
All right, get through that now. We're going to go to staff. If there's any comments from what the public said, then I'll move to the board. Again, the outcome for today is to file this report and receive it and assume its recommendations.
Just a thank you to our consultant for presenting today and for the public comments. To address your comment just now, what we're asking from your board today is to receive the presentation, accept the three assessment documents, and then adopt the strategic recommendations as Humboldt County's offshore wind workforce and supply chain roadmap.
Appreciate that. All right, we're going to start with Supervisor Bush now. If you have anything to say about this.
I don't. I appreciate the presentation and the work that has been done around more, you know, considering not so much offshore wind but port development, that I think is very crucial for Humboldt County. I also, you know, have been able to be involved through workforce board development and appreciate the updates that we've gotten there, and thank you to staff and all the comments. And I will make a motion for staff recommendations.
Okay.
I'll second.
Great. Any other comment before we move to votes? Supervisor Bone?
The comment was made. I mean, I think they've decided this is a 12-year project now, and we're six years into it or five years into it. And I'm always concerned about this workforce training, which was mentioned earlier. We're going to train people to do things that aren't going to happen for, I would say, 16 years. And I think there's going to be a gap there. And then the other thing is with the current labor agreement that they've signed out there, most of our, you know, labor force is not going to be available for that job unless we join the union. And that's not what the whole thing. So I don't know if those things are being addressed. I know if you have a labor agreement, you can't get private funding, so that's going to be an issue. And then the other thing is, we're building something that is not built anywhere else in the world. Nobody else is going to be at 3,000 or 4,000 feet. So the design, I'm just saying, there's so many things to overcome, and I know we've spent a few million dollars, you know, taking trips and doing things and trying to put this together, but, and it was the main force and why we lost a project six years ago, which would be making our county carbon neutral. But it became a little more political than that. So with that being said, I, that's not an answer, it's just a statement that I think, you know, this is all fun and it's great, but we've put a lot of money, I mean, you know, the Fish Farm is going to bring in, well, we don't have the Fish Farm. And this one, Fish Farm was being built on ground, so I mean, it's got a proven track. So I would like to see more discussion about that. I know today we're on a fast track, so thank you.
Supervisor Rayo?
Thank you. Well, amazing job on these documents and the assessment, and I think I did learn some things, and it was nice to see some of the things we already know about our community laid out in a way that was digestible and usable, you know, especially as this is an ongoing dynamic situation. Obviously, we, you know, we likely all saw that, you know, the ban has been overturned, at least for now, I'm sure that'll be appealed, but, you know, there's some pretty clear direction that, you know, an entire industry can't just be banned outright for, you know, without more detail provided. So I think that's some hopeful news when it comes to buoying interest and investment in the sector and ongoing planning. I also appreciated that, I mean, there's a number of hopeful things to talk about, but one of the, you know, things that I think affects us as far as considering, you know, energy production and where we fit into the markets for that is the, you know, decision on AB 825 that happened this fall, establishing, you know, creating a path for a Western regional energy market. So we have the opportunity to, you know, that plus transmission gives us the opportunity to potentially export energy from our region. So some interesting developments there and lots more on the horizon. I really appreciated, you know, the, obviously, the sort of short-term and medium-term efforts that we can undertake around supply chain workforce, you know, community leadership and policymaking was very helpful. Again, some of that I already knew, but having it all laid out and in that way that, you know, here are some things we need to work on just in the next couple of years, and then here are some longer-term items was really helpful. I also appreciated when it comes to workforce training, this idea that many of the general, I'm quoting from this section, "Many of the general safety and skill certifications that workers will need to work at their existing professions will overlap with the requirements they need for this sector." So I think that's a really good thing to bear in mind, that people who are doing technical and construction-related work are going to be able to leverage what is useful for them in their sector as a whole. And then there are more, you know, detailed areas of focus like maritime work and working at this type of height that would be additional considerations, but that people can be, that we can be training a workforce that's also geared towards building and construction trades, which is obviously something we've seen as needed. So I just appreciate all the work that went into this. I think these are great and useful documents, and, you know, I know that this is a time where everyone's going, huh, well, I guess we'll see what happens here. But I agree with the speaker who said, you know, we were unprepared or scrambling before, and now we'll be in a position to have done this legwork, which also puts us in a better position for funding. So thank you for that.
Okay. All right, I'm going to close out. I'm just going to say that if California wants to do this, I believe it can be done. State of California, I mean, if, in terms of floating offshore wind, those three countries that currently are in production, Norway, Portugal, and Scotland, their combined GDP is half a trillion, where California's four trillion. So I believe if California wants to do this, they have the juice, we have the juice. So with that, if there's any other comments, is there any objection to unanimous consent? Seeing none?
We're up on the board.
We're up on the board too, so there you go. All right, moving on, we're going to go to the CSD item, so let's, we can get to that, that'd be great, because I know you guys have a timeline in terms of the potential funding and all that other stuff, so.
Thank you, Chair Wilson. For the audience's information, this is item I4. In August of this year, the county received a notice of filing from the Humboldt Local Agency Formation, also known as LAFCO, regarding the proposed North McKay Ranch annexation to the Humboldt Community Services District. In accordance with Revenue and Taxation Code, this initiated a negotiation process between HCSD, also known as Humboldt Community Services District, and the county to explore opportunities for property tax sharing agreements between our two agencies. We did come together and discuss that. I think I've been pretty clear with the district and also in the staff report that pursuing a property tax sharing agreement is not something that I am supportive of, primarily for two reasons. Number one, it's an incredibly small amount being requested, that is not a typo in the staff report at this point in time, just under $153 is on the table for an annual contribution. And so administratively effectuating that would cost more than what we would actually be sharing, which in my mind just doesn't make a whole lot of sense. Additionally, property taxes are bread and butter, and it's typically something that counties hang on to very tightly. And if we do pursue property tax sharing agreements, it's typically a reciprocal relationship where we share revenue and that district or entity takes on some level of services to remove some burden off of the county, which is not occurring in this instance. We only have a couple instances where the county has agreed to share property tax in the past, and it has been primarily focused around fire services and sustainability in fire services. So this is certainly an outlier for us and a precedence that worries me for us to be setting in our communities and establishing an expectation that the county will continue to share property taxes with districts that are not relieving the county of services. If your board were to be supportive of the partnership of a financial support to the district, then my recommendation to you would be to direct staff to do a direct budget allocation out of the general fund to the district, which will alleviate some of the bureaucratic red tape in there, although I will say the amount is, again, so small that it would still likely cost us more to process that check than we would be handing over if we stuck with the amount proposed in this agreement. With that, we have the district and the audience, who I am sure is anxious to speak with you about their motivations behind this, and welcome your board's feedback.
Okay, great. Before we get to anything else, we're going to have the district represent themselves in this, and we'll go from there.
Do we have a button here, or am I on? All right.
You're on.
Thank you very much for getting us in before your closed session. Really. Really, thank you. It's our responsibility, Tax and Revenue Code 99.1 says, "We come in here, we come to the county, and we negotiate. We negotiate for," and that's what you do when you assess property every time. And so it's my responsibility to represent the ratepayers and come in here and try and negotiate for a percentage of incremental tax sharing. This project has been going on for a really long time, and there's interim costs associated with it. If anyone's been behind hospice and looked at the big open cul-de-sacs out there, there's water lines under there and sewer mains under there, and nothing is happening, except the expected useful life of that infrastructure is degrading away. At the end of Manzanita, which is Phase 1 of the McKay Ranch, there is a fire hydrant with a black plastic bag over there that has been there since before I ran for office. So we've already lost close to 15% of the expected useful life of that fire hydrant. It's never been turned on, and that's a $4,000 piece of equipment, not installed. So we've already spent $500 just from having a fire hydrant installed there. So there is this interim cost of being partnerships here in Humboldt County Housing for All. We want these things to move forward, but we also know that the costs associated with the interim risk of beginning a housing development like this, just like the one behind hospice, costs our ratepayers money. So I know it's $153 right now, but if you look at this over the long term, when it's fully developed, that's $15,000. That doesn't seem a lot to you guys, we were just talking about tens of millions for offshore wind, but that's $2 per ratepayer right now. And believe me, when it comes time for rates, $2 per ratepayer is going to be something that comes to the board. So it is, it does seem like small numbers now, because that's based on a really low assessed value for the property as it stands. As it gets developed, it'll be slightly more. And every penny matters. We don't have, we don't make margins, and we don't have unrestricted funds, with the exception of the incremental tax burden that we have now. And I have more to say, but I know you guys are on a short timeline. And I also want to say that we're here, we're trying to develop a partnership, and so far it's been great. We've met with Mr. Ford. I see that happening. I like your rebranding of Humboldt Housing for All. I want you to know that HCSD has been your partner in this all along. So there is a quid pro quo, and it's that we are coming to the table, we're bringing these applications forward, and we are running risk. And trust me, Forester Gill, there was an enormous risk to the Humboldt Community Services District, and that's the Martin's Lu Interceptor. We're paying for that, our ratepayers are paying for that, and we want you guys to understand that when we put it out there on the table for housing developments like that, we are assuming a risk, and that's our quid pro quo, that's our trade-off. So thank you. Michael?
Thank you for hearing us today. What we're talking about here, the Walnut Corridor has up to 5,000 housing units planned. And as a water and sewer district, we're not concerned about housing development. It's not in our, in our thought process for the most part, but I know it's important to all of you, but what we can't do is keep burdening our ratepayers with development or the tease of development that then ends up costing in the current ratepayers. Supervisor Bone complained about his water bill, and that's exactly what we're doing up here right now, is trying to make sure that your bills are not being burdened by somebody else's future profits. It is, there's a lot, there's a lot of money that goes into a water and sewer district in maintaining and keeping up the rate, the infrastructure so that we can have a successfully functioning system. And what's happened over the years is maintenance has been pushed off, and new development has been prioritized. And what that does is costs ratepayers that are currently there with absolutely no benefit. So what we are looking for is just a partnership. We'd like to see the county be able to get as much housing as they need, and what we need to do is protect our ratepayers so that we're not constantly burdening them with somebody else's future development that benefits them in no way. Thank you.
One second. Is that it for you guys for now?
Yes.
Okay, well, you can stay there if you want.
I can answer questions.
Yeah, but first, I'm going to go to public comment, so that we can move that. Do we have public comment on this item?
Yes.
Okay, two minutes is where we're at, so.
Caller 7718, I will unmute you, and you'll have two minutes.
I strongly support Lisa Hayes, the CAO's opinion on this particular topic. I always go through life and I say pick my battles, and I don't pick a battle for $152.43 coming asking somebody for a favor for that. That would just about be something like not having, don't hit some coffee at a few meetings. If I was in a better mood, I'd offer to just go ahead and pay him the $152.43, and then the county wouldn't have to deal with it, but I'm not in that particular mood right now. So I recommend that you follow your staff's recommendation on this one that was well-spoken, well-portrayed to you. It's not a common process out there, and there's no reason to suggest this present. If people in Blue Lake were going to be probably faced, we have, I think it's a, I don't, $50 or $175,000 deficit in our, that's way more than $152.43. And the ratepayers will have to make that up and pay it, so it's just part of the ballgame. Part of the benefit for a district is actually having all this service in the future, they rolled the dice, they made major improvements banking upon certain things that's their decision. I don't see why the county could have to go through a process that is very expensive to do, cutting that check like this, and then it should probably cost considerably more and breaking that down and all this stuff. They're not going to speak today.
Anyone else out there in Zoom land?
That's all.
Okay, anyone in the room that wants to speak to this that's not you guys? All right, we're going to bring it back to the board for a minute. I know Supervisor Bone has a comment.
Yeah, I've been, as questioning my bill out at Redwood Fields, the approximate $3,000 a month for a few months this last year. I now have the plans on my desk to build, to put in a well. I have no other opportunity than to spend $75,000, because it's the safety of the youth and the, you know, 1,500, 2,000 kids that play out there, 700 games that are played annually. So it's put me in a bind. We've tried every which way from heaven to try to get that reduced. I've got a separate, I have a separate irrigation line, other than, you know, I'm willing to pay for my full water and sewer services at the thing. But as we're looking at this, and just, just so you know, you talk about things, 33 years ago, I had to put in a sewer line to the other side of the fields for 160 feet to tie in to the sewer connection that the McKay Ranch at the time was going to have. I had to pay for that, had to put in the six-inch line, had to do everything else, and now I notice it's cracking in a couple places and stuff, so I, you know. So I would, I would be fine with giving the district $1,000 a year, even though it's only 150 now, compound that is, by the time McKay Ranch is built, or never built, because it's been 30 years so far. And part of that, too, was actually getting it accepted. And the nice thing about the McKay Ranch, they're, they're going to pay $1.7 million for a new water tank for you. I believe that they're paying for that. And I think they're paying for most of the infrastructure when they put it in. So the burden on you guys will just to be able to collect the rates, and I understand that they have to go up and everything else, but we're going to double, as being one who pays, we're doubling our rates over the next five years, I believe, but, you know, are pretty close to doubling our rates out there in the next five years for water and sewer, for the consumers out there, because I am a consumer of HCSD. So I would be willing to do that, and if we wait another 25 years, you're getting 750 a year extra, that's going to be 21,000. When it gets to that 15,000 point, maybe there'll be something we can do. But to get into an agreement, as our CAO said, that is unprecedented, you know, and in all honesty, does it seem like a lot of money to you guys? Yeah, it seems like a lot of money, but you guys are, you know, you guys are pretty flush, your reserves are pretty good, if I remember right, looking at the last financials. We're not as lucky, and you ought to see all the things the county has to provide. So, I mean, I'd be willing to do something like that, but as it sits right now, I agree, but this is something, uncharted territories, and it opens a door to 30 other community services districts or JPAs that are around the county that provide water and sewer.
Thank you, Supervisor Bone. Is there any other comment from Supervisor Arroyo?
Thank you. I definitely appreciate the spirit of partnership that you're asking for, and I know this has been kind of a tricky one to navigate as a whole. And I also recognize what we're saying here is that this really is such a small amount as a one-time cost, that it's, it's creating kind of a precedent for also giving this very, very small amount, when it costs us kind of a lot to just do the legwork, and we'd want to have some kind of agreement in place. So I guess I'd put it back to you about whether there's something aligned with sort of what Supervisor Bone is saying, or something that's a little longer term that we could structure, where we're in a relationship, but it's, and I'm not talking about property tax sharing, but rather that we identify a discrete amount. So I think I'd be interested in entertaining that versus just sort of a single general fund allocation that, you know, that sort of says, yep, we're here for you, but doesn't address the longer-term relationship.
Before we get to our esteemed guests, I think Supervisor Bushnell has comment or questions. I want to get, I want to get everyone on the record before, and then we'll let you guys respond, so.
Thank you, I appreciate, thank you, Chair, I appreciate that. I do, along with Supervisor Arroyo's questions, have some also, and like her, I appreciate the partnership that you guys are seeking. My question would be that, do you have rates set, increase in rates? And I think that the chair wants you to answer at the end, yeah, I think, right? Yep. So my questions are, do you have rates that are set to increase over the next how many ever years? I'm reluctant, just because, and I'm going to ask my CAO this, is there any other CSD that we do this with?
Glendale Field Brook, but again, and that is referenced in the staff report, and so that one was, while it's a CSD, it's primarily focused around the fire services.
Right, and I know that, and I'm asking generally for audience to hear as well. It's not that I don't want to partner, I just with, you know, it being bound by our general fund, and we don't know, we're very uncertain what our general fund's going to look like in two years. We've asked departments for 10% vacant series rate, we're reducing departments, and I know it's not a large ask. $15,000, though, is a position for someone at the county that it's hard to say. And so my general question is about how are your rates structured for the next five years? Also, I would like Supervisor Bone's question asked, answered. How much of this falls on the construction, the owners that will be doing this? I know that you're responsible to the property, and then he's responsible from the property line forward, but if you could update, and those are my questions. Thank you.
Great. I think you guys have heard. Supervisor Madron?
Two questions. One, on property taxes, don't we only get 16% of them to the county, approximately?
Yes.
Yeah, just approximate. We don't get all of it.
Correct, yeah. That gets shared out primarily with the school districts.
Right, we get a small, a small portion, yeah, right, right. Only a small portion goes to the county. And I do appreciate all the work that Supervisor Bone has done on the ballfields and everything else, but aren't you representing a nonprofit there, and isn't there a conflict of interest here? I'm just not sure. Would that be something County Council could speak to?
That was something, that would be something that would need to be addressed by the PPC, and it would be for Supervisor Bone to make that decision as to whether or not to bring that to them.
Okay, thank you. Just wasn't sure what you thought about that.
I see none, because in all honesty, over the last 35 years, while I've built them and maintained them, it has done me nothing but cost me money out of my own pocket, especially the first five or 10 years. And I think to be a conflict, I have to benefit from it. And, except if I want to have a great loss of time, and a burglar alarm that went off at 4:30 this morning, I can show you on my phone, and having to drive out there, I don't see a conflict at all, but you can make one if you want.
I'm going to chalk it up to experience with the subject matter. So you guys have some responses to these questions?
Yes, we do have rates that are going up over the next two years, and then another five-year cycle will start. That's set out by law by Prop 218. That's how it has to happen. We have a consultant who comes in and gives us a breakdown of future costs, charges, and where we're at. Water bills can only go towards water projects, sewer bills can only go towards sewer projects. So we're in a tight place also. It's why we always have to constantly raise rates if we want to maintain the system. The developer is taking on the cost of the new infrastructure that's going to be developed and put in, but once it's put in, it is on the back of the ratepayers to maintain it. And without that development actually happening in a rapid fashion, we're going to have a lot of maintenance and upkeep costs on places where there's absolutely no ratepayers. So that is, that is truly the burden there. And as far as what Supervisor Bone recommended is, you know, something like a $1,000 payment a year, we'd absolutely be amenable to that, and I think it would show a great amount of goodwill from the board to the partnership that we are trying to develop here.
All right. Is it, yes?
So I have a comment regarding the difficulty associated, the administrative difficulty. Already, there's going to be a small incremental tax sharing, that's the point 011. And that, that hasn't been done yet, because we haven't gone into the annexation phase yet. And so all of this does is change those numbers, and so there isn't actually an added administrative burden, because you're already going to assume that administrative burden, which is why we're here now, instead of coming in after the fact, or is that, right now, that process is going to move forward, and we're just asking for those numbers to be a little bit different. And really, like Supervisor Bone said that we were flesh in our reserves, we don't, we, all we build up is what we get from incremental tax sharing. That is it. Everything else is Prop 218, you spend water money on water and sewer money on sewer, you're not even allowed to, to, you know, charge more, have a slash fund, or, the only thing we have for these interim costs associated with moving development forward is, right now, we get $450,000 a year for the 8,000 ratepayers that we have. And so this just kind of holds us consistent with what we have right now.
Okay, Supervisor Bushnell, and then I think I'm going to entertain a motion.
Okay. I would just like Auditor Controller to respond to that, because it's not our wheelhouse of what administrative burdens. I don't know. And then also, maybe Supervisor Bone knows, but the second part of my question is, we've heard from many times that this development is not going to happen because it's too costly. And if we do entertain a motion where we are giving you folks money, I guess that, then I would, I would want that money not to start until that development is done. How does that work, I guess, is what I'm asking, and you can come back up after he's done, if you wouldn't mind. Thank you, I'm sorry. It's starting to go for you.
Thank you, Supervisor Bushnell. So the numbers before you are based on the AB 8 distribution, which is the first step in a rather long and arduous process of distributing property tax revenues. One of the next steps is what's called the Educational Realignment Augmentation Fund, or ERAF. Whenever we do a tax sharing agreement, there is an administrative burden on my office to calculate which percentage of the ERAF still belongs to the county, and that's give or take 45% of the total tax that would have been raised by the county. So we still have to pay that, even though somebody else is getting the money. It's a, and that is a pretty significant administrative burden for what's a relatively small amount of money.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
All right. So Supervisor Bone?
I'd like to make a motion that we give up.
I'd like to make a motion that we give up. And a little backstory, because I was involved in all of this, and probably a little bit more than anybody, because it's gone through three owners out there. This project was actually rated for 327 homes. The maps, everything else was almost approved. And now we're down to 125 homes and 190 multi-force eight and four workforce housing. So the whole thing has changed quite a bit. And until we get the bike lockers fixed out, we may never build them. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to make a motion that $1,000 a year, sharing, however it needs to be written up, and our CAO can figure that out, to be payable as soon as the first shovel full dirt is turned. So once they start building the infrastructure, which shows a commitment that it's going to happen, but I can't see paying the $1,000 because what you're asking for is something that may not happen, in all honesty. So I...
Can we get a term on that? Is there a number of years before it comes back to the board for reconsideration?
10 years.
10 years. Okay. Does that, you hear what?
Yeah, I understand the motion.
Okay, great. I think that's, I think we're, we're in this conversation here. Unless there's any more discussion, people can vote yes or no for that proposal. I'll second that. Get it going. Anything else? Nope? Okay.
Do I get comment?
Well, I'll give you 30 seconds, because we're...
Earlier in your consent calendar, you approved, and thank you very much, by the way, a CDBG grant to study 5,000 housing units along the Walnut Corridor.
Yes.
So we're not, I'm not talking about $153. We're really talking about sharing the burden in planning for housing for all in Humboldt.
I hear you.
Okay.
But what I want to do is, here's my intention, which is to get this on the books that we're partnering. We don't really know what we're, what's going to be happening in the future as Supervisor Bone is saying in terms of the development. But I want to get us past the threshold that you're looking for in terms of your future funding and your ability to seek those funds and state that there is partnership with the county. I think we're going to do that today. So that is, that's, I think, well, maybe we'll do it today. I don't know. There's a motion and a second to do something like that. I don't know how the outcome will be. I'm going to assume that we don't have unanimous consent, and so I'm asking people to use their voting device.
Can I, I'm sorry, can we restate the motion?
The motion would be for the CAO's office to allocate a general fund contribution to the HCSD in the amount of $1,000 annually for 10-year upon commencement of construction.
Yes, that is the motion.
Excuse me, and to approve the resolution attached that indicates the county will not be entering into a property tax sharing agreement.
Thank you for that clarification.
I just have one more question.
Sure.
So, so this is more like a donation then, and not a, which can't donate taxpayer money, I know. So how do we structure this? And does this open it up for other CSDs to come and say, we want $10,000 for development?
So you're referring to a gift of public funds, I do believe, and it is okay to provide revenue to a jurisdiction, particularly a governmental jurisdiction, that reaps public benefit. So in that regard, this would be fine. There is clearly a public benefit to this.
And the, you know, how many CSDs are in Humboldt County? And could they all come forward and say, we're having development of blah, 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 and we need blah, blah, blah?
A lot, and yes.
Just as a clarifier for the, for the CAO, the CSDs that you mentioned before have provided a specific service for that, whatever it is. It's just specific is what I'm getting at. So could we identify something that's specific in this regard, so that we're locked into something that is a service specifically?
So to fund laying a pipeline or something?
For instance.
Yeah.
Infrastructure.
I think it complicates it. Already, I was thinking in my mind that the shovel hitting the dirt component and that triggering this might be difficult for us to come to agreement on.
Supervisor Bone?
And in all honesty, the amount is so small, when it comes time for them to use this, they're going to spend more money trying to figure out where to spend the $1,000 than what the $1,000 is actually going to bring. So what it is, is maintenance of infrastructure.
Okay. Supervisor Bushnell?
I do understand that. My issues are, you know, if there's a development redway, and they come for 10 grand, and Garberville, and so forth and so on. When it's out of the general fund, and it's not that I don't want to support it, and I do want to support housing. I just have fundamentally a problem, and I'm going to shut up because I know we're on time.
If somebody comes forward with a 327-unit housing development, that's fine. If it's going to be a 20-unit housing development, I hope they have that built into the costs.
All right. Great discussion. We have a motion and a second, and so let's see what we got.
Motion carries 3-2.
Great. Okay.
I would like to add that I do support you. I just have a really hard time with the general fund.
We have a time, I'm going to do, take, yes?
We could, we've got a time set, as you were going into at 12, but we do, we have a little bit of flexibility there. We have an attorney on the line that is only available until 1:00. So if you think you can get through the board calendar in 15 minutes...
I think we can. Because what I'm going to do is, I had a more robust discussion around the board calendar myself, but I'm going to limit that. So we're going to go into the board calendar item. I just have a few requests for just specific, specific date changes, actually two. So we can, if you want, you do the intro to this, we can do that, and then we'll kind of move on from there.
Yes. So before your board today is the calendar year 2026, establishing your board's standing meetings, recognition of December 24th, 25th as a county holiday for all bargaining units, and any other considerations your board might want to provide direction on. This comes before your board annually in December, and the proposed calendar before you is in line with prior calendars and prior direction received from your board surrounding different travel conferences and things like that to accommodate. And with that, it is fully within your board's discretion to add, remove, or change any of the information on this calendar.
Great. Is there a public comment on this item? Seeing none, we're closing public comment. Okay, so unless there's any public comment in the room. Great. I'm just, just, you know, I'm just going to jump first, and then we'll go from there. I'm just, so there, we have this schedule here in front of us that was proposed based on sort of the past practices, and there's just a couple of dates I would propose that we might want to consider for amendment. One is April 7th, is to remove that day as a meeting day, a couple of reasons. There's already going to be three meetings in that month that we'll get to for sure. But also, that is a vacation week for schools, and I want to make sure that we're being as adaptable as possible for employees that have to take time off during that time, or be, you know, do the family visits and the things that they have to do. That's one. The second change that I would propose is in the summer break time, which would basically, instead of taking the 11th of August off, we would, instead of taking that off, we would have that day, but we would take off July 28th. And the reason I would do that is because it actually would give a three-week break in there. But the other part about that is that because all of our JPAs and our other meetings tend to be mostly in the beginnings of the months, this would basically make that break sort of coincide with when we don't have as many JPAs and subcommittees and those sorts of things. So, and there's no conferences during that time or anything like that, so I feel like that that might make sense. So does, to the CAO, did those two changes make sense, or?
That recommendation was to add July 28th as a dark day.
Yes.
Just noting, right now, we are currently dark on the 21st.
Yep, that's what I'm saying.
And then removing the dark day on August 11th?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. So just moving the, moving it up a week, so that two things happen. One, we're not getting into the time when we have other subcommittees and things. And also, it does create a three-week break in that, so it's a little more flexibility for travel and those sorts of things for supervisors that might need to do that. Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you. I am curious on the board's thoughts with, we only have one meeting in May, and how many of us are, if that's going to be effective for our staff? I think it's difficult. And so it's because of WIR, which I don't know how many of us are going, Pacific Offshore Wind Conference, and then May 26th is a holiday. So I just don't know if that can work for our staff.
I have a response. I've been thinking about this a bit. One is, we could do a half-day on the 19th, and everyone can leave by noon, like I'm trying to leave by 1:00. But to go, they can, it's just going to Sacramento. So we could do a half-day, get through some work, whatever we need to do, and then just bomb out of here at noon, and everyone can get to, who wants to go, or is going to Sacramento for the ledge conference, that could happen. And then, you're right, I'm not really clear who is going to, and this broaches another subject that I wasn't trying, I was trying not to get into, which is, we have some days in here that we are not having meetings for, say NACO and other things, and we don't know how many of us are going to go to those. And so not having meetings just because one person's not here may not be as effective, but we can come back to that later. So I would offer that, give staff the latitude that if no one's going to WIR, that we'll just, we'll go, we'll have a meeting then, and if that works, okay. Or also giving latitude to, and this is in May, so this, we can bring it back on consent to figure this out, you know, maybe a half-day on the 19th. And I agree with Supervisor Bushnell, like, we may, we may need to keep some things rolling in that time. Does that make sense to the, to the CAO?
Why don't we just set a half a day on the 19th?
Okay.
And just leave it at that?
Okay, we'll set a half a day on the 19th, if that's all right. Good enough. Looking over this side.
And I will be going to WIR. That will be, you know, that's because I'm the RCRC rep. It does not, with that, it doesn't, I'm the WIR rep for, so it does not cost the county any money on that.
I hear you.
But I'm kind of, kind of anal about missing meetings. I think I've only missed one in 14 years, so.
It's no, no big deal. So, okay, so we got those. Does anyone else have any changes they're proposing in here? Because I mean, there's a day or two that I'm going to have to miss over the year doing different things, but I'm not worried about that. We'll get to those.
I'll make a motion to accept the calendar as changed.
Okay.
And can I clarify, just before we move forward, does this mean that we're keeping May 5th as a day that we are canceling? We're not meeting May 5th?
That's true.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yep. And one last thing, that's great, I'm just, this is...
I'll second, just for, so we can have a second.
Great. And just informationally, I'll probably be bringing back to the board some sort of policy changes around this at some point in the near future. In that, I would like to add the 5th Tuesdays back into this calendar, so that we can have more flexibility in the future of how we, how we create this scheduling, so that we can have more meetings.
They're in here.
Can you clarify? They're in here. They say 5th Tuesday on them.
No, 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 no.
Keep them or get rid of them?
We would, we would allow us to have meetings on 5th Tuesdays. So we would, it'd just be every Tuesday is allowable. Well, we'll talk about it later.
Can I clarify then, before we vote, that are we still considered Mondays for special meetings if we need them?
Yeah, and Fridays. Right?
Correct.
Yep.
Yes. And I can summarize the motion.
And any Tuesday that turns up in here. So, okay, thank you. Please summarize the motion, and let's move along.
So the motion would be to add April 7th as a dark day, add April, or excuse me, add July 28th as a dark day, remove August 11th as a dark day, and remove May 19th as a dark day, but only designated as a half-day. And then direct staff to return with modifications to county ordinance declaring the 5th Tuesday as a dark day, and to approve December 24th as a county holiday for all bargaining units.
That would be great.
Did you include July 28th?
Yes.
You included July 28th in that, in that discussion. That's true. Yes.
Bring your, all right. Unanimous consent? Are we moving on here? Great. Good job, folks. And we are now going to go into closed session. Can we get a report on that?
Thank you Chair Wilson. It is the intention of the board to meet in closed session pursuant to California Government Code Section 54956.9D1, in order to discuss existing litigation in the cases of Alan Keith Perkins versus Humboldt County Sheriff's Office at All, Humboldt County Superior Court Case Number CV2051130, Kelly Garrett versus County of Humboldt at All, Humboldt County Superior Court Case Number CV2502569, Raymond Frank Christie versus County of Humboldt at All, Case Number 1:25-CV-10328-RMI, Ann Corinne Morgan-Thomas and Doug Thomas at All versus County of Humboldt at All, Case Number 1:22-CV-5725-RMI.
Great. Quick, move to public comment. It appears there's two folks online for public comment. Three now? Oh, it's two minutes. We're still on two minutes. Yeah.
Thank you Chair. Caller 7718. I will unmute you, and you'll have two minutes.
Ken Swatzky, I'm doing a deep dive in item number G3, the Ray Christie litigation against the thing. To be totally honest with you, I spent multiple hours speaking with Mr. Christie and a very, very sharp attorney by the name of Rick Richmond, and I vetted him totally. He's a, you're coming up against a guy who has a $940 million verdict in his hand. He's older, he has plenty of time to do these things. I don't know what his relationship is as far as cost involved for Mr. Christie. Highly recommend you satisfy or find some way to settle it ASAP. He has 60-plus attorneys in his firm, some of which are specialists in, in appeal processes and about every part of the law there is. I haven't run into an attorney that I felt was more honest and straightforward than this particular man. You have a really big problem. You had a Travis Mendez, he was a sheriff livestock deputy, and he colluded and conspired with Adrian Kamada, who I believe was terminated, if I'm correct, from the DA's office, but still works for the county in your public defendant. I can't understand that. But anyway, documents and evidence was falsified. Mr. Christie has been cleared of all charges because that was proved in court. This is something that could cost, has cost Mr. Christie, in my opinion, probably tens of millions of dollars over the years, and he can show that loss quite easily. And so I highly recommend you get out from under this one, settle with Mr. Richmond, Rick Derrama, and save the county a whole bunch of time and money, which of course, even if you're, if you have to pay it, if you're deductible, you're still paying it. And people don't understand that. You're still paying at an increased rate. Thank you all for your time to speak today. Good luck with this one.
Thank you. Caller 3053. I will unmute you, and you'll have two minutes.
So Thomas Mulder here, just want to clarify, you can hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So I don't want to take all your time, but I believe technically by definition, each item would get two minutes. I could be wrong. I'm not an attorney. I'm just someone that graduated high school, that's about it, you know? But last time, last time I commented about your closed session, you guys, I believe violated the Brown Act. I haven't heard anything about that. But just want to remind you, and as far as I know by the Brown Act, if you are going to vacate an area where you have a meeting, there needs to be a notice posted on the door and left on that door for 24 hours, stating where you vacated to for the other part of the meetings. the meetings. Just wanted to make sure, when you do go into closed sessions, you take the taxpayers into consideration, throw away egos if there is proof that people's egos or they violated their law. You don't jeopardize taxpayers anymore when they already have been jeopardized. So, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'll keep it at two instead of eight.
Thank you. That's all, Chair.
Anyone in the room want to speak to closed session? Seeing none, we're going to move into closed session. When do we think we'll be out?
We are shooting for a half-an-hour. And then just as a reminder, we'll have the hazard mitigation plan immediately following.
Okay. And we'll be in contact with those folks to get them in here? Great. All right. Plan to see all of you in closed session here in the next five minutes. Thanks. All right. We have one item left on the agenda. Oh, and, but first, we need to report out from closed session, so take it away, counsel.
Thank you, Chair Wilson. With regard to items G1 through G3, the board voted unanimously to authorize the Humboldt County Council's office to defend the cases of Alan Keith Perkins versus Humboldt County Sheriff's Office at All. Humboldt County Superior Court Case Number CV2051130. Kelly Garrett versus County of Humboldt at All. Humboldt County Superior Court Case Number CV2502569. And Raymond Frank Christie versus County of Humboldt at All. Case Number 1:25-CV-10328-RMI.
Great.
And there was no reportable action taken with regard to item G4.
Thank you for that report out. CAO? We're moving on to the item. You're going to do, you're going to start us off. You can do the report.
Okay.
Yeah.
Today, we have Patrick Esch with us to deliver the sheriff's staff report.
Let's do it.
Hi, is Casey online? Your mic's not on.
Pick any of them.
She is not. Oh, yes, she is.
Casey?
She's on. Hi, everybody. Let me get this, everything's moving around. My name is Patrick Esch. I'm here with Casey Garrett from IEM, the consultants company who helped us with the plan today will be presenting on the hazard mitigation plan and recommending it for adoption. Today's presentation was provided an overview of the Humboldt County Hazard Mitigation, Hazard Mitigation Plan adoption process. We'll review what hazard mitigation is, why the plan is required, who participated, what adoption means for funding eligibility and long-term risk reduction and next steps. So what is hazard mitigation? Any sustained action taken to reduce or eliminate long-term risks from hazards to people or property. For example, on the picture here, you can see a flooded area. We're pretty used to those in Humboldt County. If we were to get the funding, we could create a culvert in the next picture to redirect that flow and reduce flooding. So it's really any sustained action that can reduce or eliminate long-term risks. So, what did we do? For the hazard mitigation plan, it establishes a shared vision for risk reduction across jurisdictions. Provides a structured framework for hazard identification, vulnerability assessment, and prioritize mitigation actions. And what I find to be really important is it provides an ongoing partnership that can create sustainable, sustainable communities and potentially reduce disaster risk costs. So, next slide, please. So why do we update it? It's two, two things. It's money and strategy. The biggest thing is money. In order for us to get a lot of federal funding, we have to get this plan approved by, by the board. We have to do it every five years, and it has to meet state and federal planning requirements. Our last plans ended in March 2025. And so, we've been working diligently to, to get it done as quickly as possible. But, so that, so that we can get this for federal funding. Next slide, please. The other important part is the strategy. It creates a better understanding of how disasters can impact our community, creating those long-term blueprints. We create goals, actions, and then those plans. We identify actions to the hazards that we have also identified so that we can strategize on making our community safer. Next slide, please. So for this plan's jurisdiction, we had 26 different jurisdictions, including the county. We had seven incorporated cities, 18 special districts covering fire, water, healthcare, and community services. Each jurisdiction had to have one representative to go to all the meetings and participate in those meetings. Just for a little historical fact, last plan, we had 23. So we're getting more jurisdictions who are very interested in, in getting these plans and strategizing with us. Next slide. So, we're going to go through the structure of the plan. We'll make it pretty, fairly quick, but I wanted to talk about this because there was a lot of partnership and communication with the public, especially vulnerable populations, so that we can make sure that we have a plan that is of the highest quality and brings in the community as much as possible. Next slide. So for the planning process, we started, we had the kickoff meeting last December 2024. There, we, we established the expectations, the goals, and, and the outcomes. And that's also where we established the steering committee, who made a lot of the, the decisions throughout the planning process. We also had 26 different stakeholders, including Native American tribes, nonprofits, and neighboring jurisdictions. And we'll go into this a little bit more, but we also conducted a public survey in English, Spanish, and Mung, where we received 613 responses, which is pretty good. Next slide. Through the timeline, again, we started last December. We ended on June 3rd, where we submitted to CalOES for the initial review. During this essentially six-month timeline, we did everything. The processing, the risk assessment, the strategy, the preparation draft, all, all to get the adoption done. We did it in a very expeditious amount of time because we needed to get it done to get, to make sure we had the funding. There was a couple jurisdictions that required it because they, they needed to get it done because they already had grant money established. But more importantly, well, not more, more importantly, also very important, we wanted to make sure that this is done as soon as, as soon as we could. But, but the highest quality as well. Next slide. So for the risk assess, yeah, for the risk assessments, you know, we identified, described, analyzed all those things. And what it really comes down to is the hazard identification, exposure of, analysis, and the vulnerability assessment and impact estimates. Using a hazard modeling, as you can see in that picture, we created a bunch of different scenarios to see what those hazards would look like. This one is the earthquake in Little Salmon, which is east of Humboldt Bay. It is very violent in that area, and like any earthquake, it expands out down to moderate. So no matter where you are in our county, we are all affected by earthquakes in some way, shape, or form. And using, using the data that we, we have, we can establish that. Next slide. So we did identify 10 different hazards. These are different hazards from the last plan. Not, not going to go into each of them, but our biggest one is the earthquake because a big earthquake can severely impact the county. And we do have dams up there. We do have the Scotia Log Pond Dam, as well as the Big Lagoon Dam, but also another big dam that's outside of the county that can impact us greatly is the Matthews Dam. And then we have a few others. I should also note that climate is included with each of these hazards. It is very important that we include that for future planning as well. It was one of the hazard identified in the last plan, but we see it as very important to include in every single hazard identified there. And then next, next slide. With the capabilities assessment, this is where, where we really get to reach out to each of the jurisdiction, establish or maintain a really good relationship with everyone, get to know them, find their effectiveness, their scope, their readiness, and find out how we can help them out in the short and long term. We broke it into five categories, as you see on the slide. But the really important part is getting that information from them to help them out and maintain a good relationship with them. Next slide. Through all that data, we, we developed our guiding principles and goals. Through those guiding principles, we really want to establish good, good partnerships and to make sure that our communities are safe. And then we created those seven goals. It is actually a requirement for us to do this through, through the federal regulation, but we see it as important anyways so that we can all have a common guiding principle. From there, next slide is just more goals, but all these are, can be seen in the plan as well. Oh, thanks, Casey. We, you go back, you go to the next one. Thank you. Is, is the plan objectives? And there's 12 of them. A little hard to see on here. But this is what all the planning partners decided on, and that was approved by the steering committee. And this is all jurisdictions will, will abide by as they're, as they're continuing their hazard mitigation plan. It really just establishes good partnership, good data, and making sure that we're protecting our, our community in some way, shape, or form. Next slide. And then from there, we create our mitigation actions. And there's a few types of mitigation actions. Local plans, regulations, structures, natural systems, education, and awareness. And they were prioritized based on the ability to meet multiple objectives. And then there's actions, as I've already stated. What is unique to our county, not a lot of other places do this, is that we actually created countywide actions, meaning that all the jurisdictions said, yes, these certain actions are very important countywide. They didn't include them in theirs, they just included them in the countywide on something that we all should be working on. And we find out to be really important because as a community, we should always be working together to make sure we have a safe, safe community. Next, next slide. And these are the area-wide actions that we created. Again, it's really just focusing on community-based and making sure that we're actually utilizing the tools that create, including the plan. We don't want to have a plan that just collects dust. We want to be able to use it. Even if we can't get funding sometimes, we can still use it to, to strategize, to maintain partnerships. Next, next slide. And there's five more there. Some of them are going to be pretty easy to do. We just want to make sure that they're written down. Other ones are going to be a little bit more, more challenging to do, and that's okay. But we want to make sure that they're on there. I'm going to go on to the next slide. I know it's fun reading these. Really important part is public outreach. We wanted to make sure that we are reaching out to, to the community. The community knows a lot about their own areas, and we want that information. So part of that was making sure that the steering committee was open to, to the public, as well as the public survey went out to, to communities across the board. We want, we also sent the flyers out using welfare-to-work mailers, Food for People, as well as the Senior News. We posted on social media, the websites, buses as, as well. And each jurisdiction posted a display open to the public. Last time, for the last plan, we got a little over 200 responses, and this time we got over 600 responses, which I think is a decent number, but we can always do better. From that survey, the biggest hazard concern were earthquakes. And the most important mitigation action people wanted to see was updating public Next slide. And then, plan, what plan maintenance is, is once it's adopted, we go into plan maintenance, where we start trying to build projects, maintain good relationships. As I already noted before, we don't want this to be a dust collector. We want to reach out to all the jurisdictions, find out how we can support and coordinate with them. So I created a, well, I updated the, the committee, so there's one representative from each type of jurisdiction that we would have here in the county that would be part of the plan so that everyone can be represented. We also established in the plan that we have to at least meet once a year. And if there's other reasons to meet, we should meet for that. And because we want to make sure that this plan's actually being used. And we want to make sure that we're, we're reaching out to all partners. Because there are partners, as we all know, that have one or two staff members. They can only do so much. If we can find ways to help them out, let's do it. And then, next, next page? Slide? Adopting the plan. Once the board decides to adopt a plan, we'll let CalOES know. FEMA still needs to review the plan. I'm not holding my breath because it is going to take them a while, but we can still adopt a plan, move forward. And then from there, we'll be eligible for funding and continue our good relationships and strategies. Any questions?
Thank you, Patrick. Our chair had to step away, so I'm taking his place.
No worries.
Great presentation. This is a very robust two-part document.
It is.
So big, it has to be in two parts, but there's a lot of great content in there. So I'll ask if there are any board questions or comments at this time? Please, go ahead.
Thank you, Acting Chair. Thank you for coming. This is the first time we've actually met, and I'm glad to see you onboard and taking over. So, and the plan is great. I have three comments. One, you know, we had these tsunami warning sirens up at Clam Beach, Trinidad and Oryc. They're no longer functional. They were gifted to us. They were used, gifted to us, but there was no operation of maintenance budgets, and they no longer work, and that's a big void. Oryc, in fact, took those down because it was in the way of the expansion of their fire department. So that's just something I want to put on your radar, that we need to replace those, and we need to be able to maintain them. They're pretty important in that area. I don't know about Shelter Cove, or it's pretty much up on the bluff, so it's probably not an issue. But Centerville Beach, you know, there's a few places in the county around Humboldt Bay where I don't know what the situation is there with these tsunami warning sirens. But that's one item. Another one is, during the process, Patrick's Creek CSD, which is down by Clam Beach, was at all the meetings. But they somehow missed the memo on needing to submit a request to be included in the hazard mitigation plan, so they're not listed, they're not in there. And they were pretty upset about that. In fact, Pat Caspari, who's the general manager of McInnesville CSD, wrote a letter about this, and we were like a week late, and we were trying to get into the plan, but it wasn't really allowed because it was trying to be rushed to get finished. And, you know, some of us thought, well, it'll take a week to, you know, kind of modify it. How big a deal is that? But it didn't happen. Now, they can apply individually, right? But it's a lot more cumbersome, especially for a CSD like that that has one person, right, managing the CSD with a dozen houses or whatever. So I just wanted to keep them on your radar as well. I hope we don't have to wait five years to get them included. And they have flooding at the bottom of Patrick's Creek Road, right where it meets Clam Beach Road. our road vegetation maintenance and create some youth work crews in the process and stop, you know, the mowers going along and hitting hard objects and break down for a $40,000 repair, right, because you couldn't see the metal post or the tire or the rock because the grass is, you know, six feet high.
Yes.
So those are just a few items I wanted to put on your radar, and Tom and I will be in touch in regards to that, because those are true hazards. You know, we just think, well, you got to mow the road. Well, it's not that simple. There's a lot more to the hazard mitigation, and I know you know this, in regards to how we maintain our roads, and having the funding ability to actually be able to do that, so.
Yeah, to the second point with Patrick Creek, I was in contact a lot with the president, Heidi.
Yeah.
And, yeah, she showed up to us, all of them.
And they missed the memo.
Majority. Yeah, so, yeah, we'll be looking at different changes into the future, making sure that people can be, it's more inclusive, essentially. But also, I did want to add in Patrick Creek. So Patrick Creek is actually added into the Humboldt, Humboldt County Action 23. I wanted to make sure that was documented in there so that, so when the county is able to work on some of these projects, they can, we can pinpoint, it's like, oh, yes, we see Patrick Creek Drive is in there. So, yeah, I, yeah, I didn't, I wanted to try and bring them, bring them in as much as I could within, within the limitations.
Understood.
Yeah.
Yeah, understood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other board comments?
Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Just thank you for the report. Appreciate it and appreciate all the work that goes into all the community meetings that you had and, and the updates.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment on this item online? Kaylee?
Great. Caller 7718, I will unmute you and you'll have two minutes.
Two minutes, sorry, thank you. We're going to stay, stick with that.
Thank you for my two minutes. I think part of it, I've talked to Supervisor Madrone, is, is the brush along the roadways needs to be maintained in a timely manner. What happens is you have certain invasive species out there, and after they bloom, they go to seed pod, and then you mow the thing, and you're just spreading the seeds around, so that needs to be worked on. There's levees in Humboldt County. I think there's one up in Oryc. I don't know whether that's been worked on or certified or fixed. I know the one in Blue Lake is totally deficient. It's not certified. It's not built up to standards. They had some kind of a study done on it, but you know, that was a kind of a phony study. The maintenance doesn't happen on these levees. The willow trees grow in there, the roots get into the system. These are earthen levees, and when the flood comes by and takes those willow trees, it will take the levy with it. And again, that's something I've been bringing to the attention of the county for probably 20 years now. I don't think they're being maintained. I'm not seeing it. It's a shared responsibility. The levy that protects Blue Lake is partially county jurisdiction and their responsibility. That is the upriver one. In other words, if that fails, a significant portion of Blue Lake fails. Blue Lake, a lot of the area down there is in both 100 and 500-year floods. The 500, the 500-year floods, the 100-year floods have been happening every 12 or 14 years, so, and I wouldn't count on getting any money from FEMA in a timely manner. It's going to be laundered through CAL OES, all that drying up is my understanding, and so we're kind of not going to have funding for any of these projects, just like Tom Mattson will tell you, once you have a disaster, to get the money out of, out of FEMA is taking forever, if you get it at all. And so I'm not optimistic about funding for this wonderful thing to look after. Fire prevention and all these other things are really key.
Thank you, that's your time. Thank you for your comment. All right, is there any public, more public comment online? There is not. All right. And is there any public comment in the room? We have a packed house right now, so. All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close public comment, and so we have several portions of this motion before us today. I did just want to note that levy and flood management falls within Public Works, and there's a whole page about it on our county website that details a lot of that, but was there anything else you wanted to speak to regarding levy and flood management? Okay, all right. Patrick, anything else you want to add?
No.
Thank you for the hard work on this. I know you did a lot of the work of this before moving into your current role, and you'll continue to be in the hazard mitigation space, but thank you for, for all the work. And I know we have some stringent requirements around this document, so I understand that that's part of why making changes was difficult. So thank you for bringing this forward, and we'll, I'll entertain a motion for, for this item.
Motion to approve staff recommendation.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Let's go ahead and vote.
Supervisor Madrone?
Yes.
Supervisor Arroyo?
Yes.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Bone absent, Supervisor Wilson absent. Motion carries 3-2.
Thank you, Casey.
Thank you very much. Okay. And with that, that is the last item for us today, so we are adjourned. Thank you very much.